Want to share mine?
I might need to, yeah.
I'd like to welcome you to our November School Board meeting. And we'll go right to item 3.1, which is the public hearing of instructional time model. Mr. Housley.
I'll make a motion to enter into a public hearing for instructional time model, please.
One second. On favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
I'm good, thank you.
This portion of the meeting, Madam President, is to collect, should there be any feedback on the instructional time model? Instructional time model was put in place last year, as you remember, as we went through COVID. The state allowed for students to be taught at home. That was part of the executive orders that came out and other things. As we left last school year, those executive orders expired. Yeah, but the state still identifies there's a need at times where you may have to close school for a time or whatever. So, school districts are adopting instructional time models. They require two public hearings and adoption. It basically says that if we have an outbreak of COVID and it's excessive, what would we do to educate students? And that's what this outlines. So, otherwise, we wouldn't have a way to collect ADM for offering that, those services. So this just outlines that and it's open for comment. If there isn't any, then we can exit the public hearing and move forward.
Anyone like from the audience want to discuss this any further?
Mr. Housley, did you want to maybe give a few ideas that are being presented in this?
Sure.
Thank you.
So, we have to outline remote learning opportunities or hybrid opportunities that might come. For instance, what do we do with our Navit students? Well, there's could be a Navit study hall through Google Classroom. White Mountain Works student internships. Edgenuity could be used for independent study. If it came to that piece, MPC students that are attending MPC could have independent study. All we have to do is outline that we would offer these services options. And so, we have Arizona Student Opportunity Collaborative that could be offered. Independent Study Odyssey is a program that we, a curriculum we use. It could also be given through independent study. IXL Interactive Online, Ames Web Plus. Open Court Comprehensive Curriculum provides opportunities for online materials to be there. Google Classroom obviously is one that we've utilized before. And then, some hybrid opportunities if it came down to where we wanted, we could still have students in session in school. But maybe the recommendation from, let's say, the Health Department was to reduce the number of students. We could go to an A-B schedule. So you might be at school on Monday, at home on Tuesday, at school on Wednesday, at home on Thursday. And that, that's projected out in this. So those are options that we have within the model. You know, some long-term, if there's long-term issues that come up, they could transfer to Edgenuity. Right now, if we had this not in place, the option would be to transfer to White Mountain Institute K-12 online. And so, not everyone wants to do that. We don't want everyone to have to do that. So, these are just some of the solutions that are there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You guys have any more questions? I'll entertain a motion to end the public hearing.
I'll move.
One second.
On favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion pass, passes. Item 4.1, call to order. And Fledge of Allegiance will be led by Mrs. Boyer and the invocation will be by Mr.
Aye.
Fledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under your law, indivisible, infinite, and just for all.
Our Father in Heaven, we're thankful for this opportunity to gather as the governing board of the Shaw Unified School District. We are grateful for the circumstances in which we have to meet. We are thankful for our community. We're thankful for the members of the community who are very giving and very kind and very loving. We are thankful for the way in which we have feeling of unity in our community and the ability to educate our children. We pray that thou will please help us and guide us as a governing board tonight, that as we discuss and talk about items that affect the education of our children, that we'll be able to do so in a manner that is pleasing unto thee and that we'll be able to do it in a spirit of unity and a spirit of kindness and respect for one another. We ask that thou will please be with us, that as we give time and energy to deliberate on these matters, that our minds will be enlightened and that we might have understanding beyond our own, be able to do what's best for the children of the Shaw Unified School District. We ask that thou will please watch over our first responders and our military. Please protect them and please watch over them. May they make it home safely to their families and may they be protected and watched over. And these things we humbly pray for and ask in the name of thy son, Jesus Christ, amen.
I'll ask for approval of the agenda. Motion to approve the agenda.
Seconda.
On favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion passes. Item 4.2, recognition of eighth grade football team.
Madam President, we invite the coaches that may be here and we have some coaches here.
Yeah, we got Hal Frost is here and I think the principal is here as well, so they can come down and give their speeches.
You all look so young, I thought you were one of the players.
Where's Becky at?
Mr. Clark told me I had 45 minutes for a speech, is that right?
Go ahead.
Do it.
I mean, just kidding. So our boys are here, can they come up and give a high five or get a picture opportunity? We brought the plaque. It was an awesome season. So I was lucky enough to have three really awesome coaches help me too. Mr. Brent Clark was one of them and then we had Chase Halcom and Clint Fitch. Dedicated a lot of time to help these boys. They put in a lot of work and we were lucky enough, the city council, we were here on Tuesday, same place, they gave us these awesome shirts. Seven and O, White Mountain League champs. So it was pretty awesome. They worked hard and I think Brent said it really well on Tuesday night at the city council meeting is that hopefully this is just a kind of a annual tradition for these boys, winning some championships and continuing to learn how to. One of the things we talked a lot about this year that I think they embody really well as a, as a team is to win with character and class. We had some pretty tough games and they did a really good job at, at winning with class and being, you know, good sportsmans and working hard on and off the field. So it was, it was a pleasure to be able to work with these boys. So, there they are.
Congratulations. Do they want to, do they want to take a picture?
Yeah. Go, go, I'm taking pictures.
Are you going to go down?
Yeah.
Oops, sorry Vanessa.
Nope.
By your boy?
Yeah, I'll go here. He's calling me now, so.
There's a handful of boys that aren't here because they're resting. So that just shows you the depth of athletes. Okay.
Stand closer.
Okay, ready? Go Cougars on three, one, two, three.
Cougars!
Okay, I think we're good. Yeah, we'll just do it right here, well, we're here.
Hey, just walk through here, guys.
Congratulations.
Good job, buddy.
Good job.
Good job, Dean.
Mr. Clark, good job. Good job, Tyler. Good job. Congratulations, we're proud of you. You guys be great. Retention.
Not bad.
Thank you, good job. Love your shirt. Good job. Good job, thank you.
Let's give them a round of applause for their efforts, that'd be great.
A fresh one coming up.
Hey Stacy, can I say one thing? So one of the things that I forgot to mention on Tuesday night about these guys was that at the first part of the season, Hal was, or Coach Frost was getting reports from the from Mrs., who was it, about academic issue? There was some, there was some behavioral issues from Mrs. Clark, she was sending them. And so Hal talked to him after, I think it was the first or second week about playing with character, about making sure that their, their leader's on and off the field and that they, he didn't want, we wouldn't tolerate behavioral issues. And I think it was about week two when he stopped getting those emails and he stopped getting those calls and he, it was Mrs. Dietering would, would talk to Hal on a weekly basis about eligibility. And we didn't have any problems with the kids throughout the rest of the season and that's, that speaks volumes to not only to their character, but also to their parents and, and to their caregivers, the people who, who, who take care of them outside of that. So, I just want to commend each one of you guys for doing that. You know, for, for making sure that you guys not only played hard on the field, but you guys stepped up outside and in the classroom to, to make sure that you guys were, were living kind of what we preached to them and stuff. If only your coach would have listened to that the last game, we would have, we could all say that we had been, had character, right? So anyways, I want to congratulate you boys, you guys did a great job.
Even more impressive, they're staying for the whole meeting.
Yeah, if you guys want to leave, you guys can, you don't have to stay for the whole thing, so you're welcome to take off.
Oh, you're here, huh Tyler?
Item 4.3, discussion and approval to change the January Board meeting. Mr. Housley.
Madam President, members of the board, the scheduled meeting would be January 13th. I've been asked by my son to attend an out-of-the-country event with him on the 13th, so I would just ask if we can move it to the 6th, that would be great. We would go later, but there are some statutory requirements to have our organizational meeting prior to a certain date, so we want to make sure that we do meet that requirement.
So that's the ninth?
It'll be the 6th.
Six.
Sorry, I didn't even bring my phone with me.
Does that work for everybody?
That works for me, I'll move that we, I'll move that we move the January 13th meeting to our, to January 6th.
I'll second that, on favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion passes. Item, item 4.4, Superintendent Reports, Mr. Housley.
Madam President, I'll invite Dr. Taylor to come up to report on curriculum and academic achievement.
Madam President, members of the board, Mr. Housley, thank you for letting me take a few minutes to visit with you about assessment and some student achievement ideas that we have. And I want to preface what I say by thanking all the teachers who are here because the results reflect their hard work. So let's take a brief, the first three slides are just a little bit of orientation. So what is assessed at the state and local level? We have reading, writing, math, and science, all assessed at the state level. And then we assess reading and math and then writing and science will be in the individual classrooms. Okay? As an English teacher, I'll, I'll interject that I really feel like we need something for writing. And that's how I feel. Next. The assessments, their names include the Arizona Academic Standards Assessment, that's what's replacing the Arizona Merit. The ACT Aspire, ACT and Arizona Sci. The grades are at the right-hand side. And, and I'll mention that each one of those, the state tests play into an algorithm that, that gives a portion of our score as an identity for each school. At the bottom, you'll notice I also wrote that bonus points are available with science if they meet certain criteria, as well as sped in English learners. The quarter one benchmark data is unavailable this, from last first quarter of 2020 because we used NWEA results or that instrument. We don't, we're not using that again right now. So, next slide. We have to get to a point where we feel like we can trust the test. No test is perfect, no instrument or assessment is perfect. But here are a few attributes that, that I think are worth noting. The, the left-hand column corresponds with the right-hand column. So test reliability is where the results are consistent. If you have a test where you can give it multiple times and you see a result or similar outcome, then you know that it's probably designed fairly well. Test validity, we have sometimes a little bit more difficulty because sometimes what we're tested on isn't always what we teach on. Even though we have the standards and we know what they are and do our best to teach them, with tests when we can't see them, it's a little like trying to hit a target that's moving or when, when it's dark. It's not always easy to do that. I know, because as a teacher, I tried many times to understand what that looked like. But there were, there were natural barriers to, to trying to guess what the state will put on its test. Even, even though the standards are the same, it's not as easy as it sounds. One of the things I'd also like to mention is the value of a pre-post combo. That's one of the weaknesses, in my opinion, of the state test because our students will study all year and take an end test. But the results themselves, while general, don't always help us because we can't see where they started. And having a pre, in a post shows actual growth. That's my preference, I think that's really what we need. I would like to have seen something like that at the state level, but it, it never came to fruition. I also believe that an assessment should be used as a teaching tool. This, in my opinion, is another weakness. Because when you have a, a test that you give and you get, your, your students get a score on it, that doesn't always help us, even though they, they do their best to give us a score in a couple of different ranges, it's not enough for us to take and then bring back to the classroom and affect real change. If we had an itemized list, even better, if we actually had the test given back to us where we could take the test inside the classroom and go over the questions with the students to show them what they got wrong and why and how to learn from their mistakes, then that assessment would be much more valuable. I also believe that parallel assessments are useful. If, under the interest of test security, we are unable as teachers to see the test, then I believe we should have a parallel exam given to us or practice. So we can use it to, to help kids get rid of the test jitters or to become familiar with the way questions are asked. Because sometimes answering questions is less about the content and more about the way the test is designed. And it would help kids to be able to see that. The state traditionally has had some questions available, but not really anything of great length or that we could use to test a, for practice in a given classroom. So for our own benchmarks, one of my goals would be to take what our teachers have and create a parallel benchmark. So they, if they want to, they can use them in their classrooms as legitimate practice in preparation for the actual benchmark. So, next slide. Here's a look at some of the recent results from the 2021 AZ Merit Test. In green, if it's marked green, that means it is the same as the state average or higher than the state average. Third and fourth grade, all ELA for reading and math were equal to or greater than the benchmark. You'll notice over to the right, I starred a couple, go ahead and hit the next piece. For the ELA, fourth grade, congratulations, you are nine percent above the state average, well done. Next one. Also in the fourth grade, you were seven percent above in math. Excellent work. Next slide. Fifth and sixth. For ELA, look at all the green. ELA and math for both fifth and sixth grade were all greater to or equal than the state average. And you'll notice that in fifth grade, they were nine percent above in math. Excellent work. Okay, next. Last one, 10th grade. Oh wait, go back one, let's see if I missed something. There it is. All right, well, we have our first red, which is in seventh grade. You're six percent lower. But I also put on there is something to recognize that the year before, we were 14% lower than the state average and now only six percent lower. That's a huge gain for one given class. So congratulations. All the rest are green and will draw attention to the eighth grade ELA. This is the first time, I think, since AZ Merit, but certainly since 2015, that we have outscored the state average. So congratulations to them.
Can I, can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
When you're saying for the seventh grade, it was 14 below 2020, do you mean the seventh grade was 14 below 2020? Or do you mean this cohort of kids were, when they were in sixth grade, were 14?
I think it's probably just seventh grade, I don't know if it's the cohort. At the same time, I still recognize the value of what I see. And congratulations to both of them, still lots of improvement. Then that's on to the 10th grade. We have one of each ELA scored higher than the state average and then for math, the high school level, we were about five percent below the state average. I will add a word of caution based on the parameters or qualifiers I mentioned earlier. It's easy to see like the number 35 that goes past the test. But based on the things that I mentioned earlier, it's really hard to try and predict what the scores will be. We use the state average to help us understand where we are in relationship to everyone else. But it doesn't necessarily, the kids aren't, it doesn't mean the kids aren't learning if the score is, is lower. I wish we had the pre-post example like I mentioned, so you could see actual growth from beginning to end. Next. So a few slides on looking forward, just what I will call a framework for conversation. Those conversations include working with instructional coaches and teachers and administration on how, what they feel is the best direction. I've put together what I think, but that doesn't mean it isn't going to change. We have to have those conversations in order for a real robust investment is, is given on all of our behalf for the improving student achievement, what Mr. Housley has asked us to do. So let's take a look. I believe fundamentally, without equivocation, you will hear it from me now and you will hear it from me the rest of my career, the, the foundation of all learning is reading. And unless we get that under control, unless we figure out how to advance reading, we will not see the kind of growth that we really want. So what's it going to look like? Excellent, go ahead and hit. I have been told, I have even represented Arizona with the notion that we need to improve reading quality. That means the level of difficulty, the Lexile score. While that's important, I don't know that I can always have my kids somehow magically jump from where they are to having them pass or, or read something of great, you know, importance or level of difficulty. There's something that has to happen. First, in my opinion, that comes from reading quantity. We have to, as a district, read 10 times more than we're reading. That's a lot. But we have to. Our, our kids have to read a lot more. I'm not so concerned about the exact level of their reading as I am really the number of pages they put down. We saw significant gains in Safford because of this very emphasis on just voluminous reading. And I, I hope to encourage everyone within the sound of my voice to find a way to do that. There is, I have some other things that I'm going to introduce later that will address this. But even before you get to quantity is this piece. You have to motivate students to read. We have a cancer, metaphorically, in our district. I've seen it, I've heard it, many teachers have shared it with me, even administrators. And that is one of apathy. Some of our kids just don't care. Now, they're young, they have many distractions. But I have seen kids who ostensibly don't care, actually do. And they will take steps to read a lot if we, if we can motivate them to do so. So my first step in helping with reading as, as a curricular focus will come from motivating them to read in great, great amounts. And I'll be talking with schools about it and, and pounding the pulpit. Next slide. Number two, writing. Okay, next. Keep going. Go ahead and do one more, just show all three of these once. I believe, when I go to school districts, and I've worked with many of them, fluency in conventions, which just means sentence fluency and, and grammar, is the number one focus. They don't know how to explain that in a way that kids get it. That's step one. Step two, or phase two, is evidence-based content. That's where our AZ Merit and now the future tests will focus is when you read something and have to pull something out to have kids write about it, using evidence from either a single or multiple sources, that's where it is. And there are ways to, to do that that are much easier. And the last one is to focus on their depth. If you look at many of the standards in Arizona, they ask students to analyze. Teachers, in a general way, know what that means. But it's not always easy to get kids to elaborate when they don't even want to say anything, let alone write it. But that's where we're going. And I do have some really useful tools in that direction. Go ahead. Number three, conferencing. You've been hearing this theme for a while now, Mr., I've heard Mr. Housley bring it up. I 100% concur that conferencing may be one of the single most important shifts that we make as a school district. First, we have to get it systemically. That means schools have to opt in, yes or no? I hope they say yes, I, I think they will. Because instinctively, we know if we can meet with a child one-on-one and go through something in great detail, it can, it's going to work. So systemic means by school. Next is systematic. We have to figure out a way, because if I'm a single teacher and I've got 25 students in my class, how am I supposed to logistically make it work where I meet one-on-one with each of those kids? Because every time I teach the whole class, I inherently neglect the single student. But every time I conference with a single student, I inherently neglect the whole class. So what you have is you have the whole class and a single student in competition for the teacher's time. We have to talk through those. It will not be perfect, it will be messy, but it will be worth it if we can figure out a way to meet with every child. When we get good at it, then our focus will become focus on content. I think this slide has some things underneath it. Would you click it? Yep. School-wide participation, next. What systematic really means is it's repeated, it's scheduled, every student gets it and it's content-focused. Not just to meet with them, although that's valuable too. I should probably have added that it's also really great for kids' social, emotional health to meet with an adult who cares for them and talks with them about, hey, how's basketball going? That matters. Last one, critical thinking. It's content-rich, it's an exploration. And I have some tools that are very, very useful in helping people dialogue about things as well as write about. I'll talk more about that in the future with schools individually. Number four. Next slide. Here's what we have, actually it's number three, I forgot about this. Go ahead and click it one more time. Not sure why I put an animation in there. This is our current model for how things work at our school. Now walk with me through this for just a second. I'm going to kind of speak loud enough, hopefully everyone can hear me. We first have the standards, then we work on the curriculum. We give the instruction, we give our little test or quiz, and then we go back to the standard. Very linear, it works. On a smaller scale, what it means is the student does the assignment, gives it to the teacher, teacher collects it, puts it in the grade book, gives it back to the student. The student does what with the assignment on the way out of class? Thank you. Throw it away. The value which we place on what we do is not there. There's something missing. So I'm proposing that we shift this a little bit. Next slide. What I believe it should look like is this. We have the standards, which gives us the curriculum. And then there's a feedback loop. Which means the teacher teaches the instruction, gives the assessment, we take the data, in my opinion- we take the data, in my opinion, that's where we do the conference, teacher gives the feedback, and we go in that circle as number, many times as it takes to get the outcome, which is mastery. I believe that conferencing, that, that feedback loop is, is one significant step. In fact, slide. I believe that it's the purest form of data-informed instruction. We have a lot of data, I've shown you a little bit tonight. But if I were to take that data and give it back to teachers, other than an atta boy or an atta girl, it's not going to help them be a better teacher. And it's certainly not going to help the kid be a better student. So data is nice, but real data is finding the gap and filling it, however that happens. Sometimes the gaps you can see in numbers, like we've seen. But sometimes the gap means sitting down and going line by line or problem by problem with the student and seeing the gap right there, right then, and filling it with better instruction that will help the kid actually learn. Next. Math. Go ahead. Go ahead, one more. These are all animated, keep going. Thank you, that's good. I talked with Mr. Marchand, is he here?
Hiding in the back.
Mr. Marchand is a former math teacher. And he, as I understand, was really good. And I, I know that we have math teachers who care. So this is sort of a, a general approach to math. I'm not a math expert, I like it, but they will have to inform this little diagram. In my conversations, we talked about the first step being to improve our math is make sure every kid knows the math talk. All of the basics that get him or her past the barriers that prevent informed conversation. Next, we have to focus on student motivation. And it seems that there's already been some attempts or some, some strategizing that is taking place in the math departments to help with student motivation. I, for one, think that competition is really a great, great tool. And if we can create some math competition, class versus class, whatever, I think it's going to excite that sort of desire to learn. And then finally, our ultimate goal is to increase the rigor. And what does that mean? That means kids can actually do the problems on these tests, these state tests, that are multifaceted, there are multiple steps. The old days have just given you a formula and having you solve it and answer the question, those aren't how tests are designed. They're often designed with multiple layers where you have to integrate various aspects of math to solve the equation. That's where we want our students. Next. Science, keep going. I put "to be determined", keep going. Because I haven't had any conversations about it, so I'll have to get back on this. And finally, thank you. Any questions?
Thank you, Dr. Taylor.
Just, the only other thing that I'd like to just report on is Feast of Carols is coming up, an annual tradition. And look forward to that, that performance and seeing another fabulous group of days of shows. So I know they're, they're working hard in preparation, so.
The first week in December? How do people get tickets? They sold out already?
Tickets are for purchase.
Are we even, at what time?
Buy tickets, but it's held at Whipple Ranch?
Yes.
Thank you. Thanks, guys. Call to the audience, I have three similar ones. If you guys all want to come together or pick a spokesperson, Mr. Whipple, Mr. Clark, and Naomi Sieg.
Good evening. I just want to take a moment and say, I just found out that somehow lack of funding was provided for the new musical upcoming. I have kids that participate in that, so as a parent tonight, I'm a little disappointed that we dropped the ball. I feel once again, lack of communication has led to this and lack of desire or something, I don't know what it is, but we have continuously dropped the ball. And now we may not have a musical if we do not act quickly by tomorrow. So I would encourage whoever can do this to fix this quickly. Thank you.
I am here to speak on behalf of the students involved in the music program at Cholo High School. Some of them came here to show their support that we've heard rumors that there's been some miscommunication that will result in us being unable to produce a musical this year. And that is all of our, it's our sport, it's our love. We put our hearts and souls into this production year after year. And we are just here to make sure and bring this to your attention that we are able to produce a musical this year. Thank you.
That's basically the same as a parent of one of the kids that love theater and music. To, to them, that is, yeah, that's their sport, that's a great way to say it. They are dedicated individuals and they love it, they work hard, they're good kids on top of it, involved in multiple activities. And I guess I'm a little concerned to know that there's a possibility that there's been a communication breakdown, that they may not be able to have their musical. So I guess I'm raising awareness and if there's a way to help get that taken care of, that they could have their musical this spring, that'd be.
Something we could talk about today? Can we talk about this today? Do you want to wait till the next board meeting?
We can do one of three things, Madam President. We can either respond.
This has to be done by tomorrow.
So we can do one of three things. We can either respond to criticism, we can ask staff to review a matter, or we can ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. And since it needs to be done by tomorrow, can I ask that this matter be dealt with by tomorrow so that we don't risk losing our musical? Is that possible, Mr. Houseley?
I don't think it's a funding issue. I don't know much musical cost, but I saw the tax credit. It looks like there's plenty of money in there.
Yeah.
I don't know, and I don't know how the rumor started, so the first I'm hearing of it.
I can look into it.
The PO was not cut, that was the problem.
Been, how long has it been?
Breakdown in communication, the PO was not cut, the check has to be mailed tomorrow in order to secure funding. Weeks ago.
Weeks ago. Something went wrong and there was no communication, send it forward.
Can you work on that, Vanessa, next week?
Oh, there's a time next week, you got to have by tomorrow.
Okay. Can you explain what's going on for them in tomorrow or today?
Yeah, I actually emailed Cynthia before the meeting, so yes.
Okay.
Can, can we get that done tomorrow, Mr. Houseley? Is that possible? If there is a, if a PO was issued and a check needs to be cut, can we do that tomorrow? Is that possible?
That's in, Mrs. B. Kraft can answer more with the status.
Yeah, I'm looking into it. So I think, I don't know if I'm.
I don't think we can really talk about it, but we can direct staff to deal with it and get it resolved. That's what we can do. Under Arizona open meeting laws, we don't have the ability to really talk about it because it's not an agendized item right now. But now that you've all come here and brought it to our attention, we can direct staff to deal with it and have that matter resolved, you know, as fast as possible, so.
I would suggest Mrs. Whipple's in charge of it, right? That she contacted business office?
She's tried.
She might have to stop in there.
I, I don't want to see our jeopardizer musical, so I want to make sure we get it done.
Which I don't think we ever have. I have confidence in that. Thanks, everybody. Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Item 4.6, future board agenda items. Do you guys have anything?
Well, I know that we had talked about subcommittees, and I would like to have discussion and approval of possible subcommittees, board subcommittees on the next agenda, please.
In December?
Yes.
And I'll ask if, on the future board agenda items, that we have a discussion on why there was a breakdown in communication on the play if we're not able to, if there is, if we're not able to fill that PO and get that done. I would like that on the future board agenda item, why there was a breakdown. But if we do get it resolved tomorrow, then I don't want it on the.
Okay. Anything else? Item 5.1, approval for Club SOAR curriculum, Mr. Houseley.
Madam President, the content is, is there. This is a curriculum that helps to address SEL and, and other, other trauma things. Mrs. Marsh could certainly expound on that. There was questions asked, Lamista asked some questions. Those are answered there in the administrative content of your book. And if there's any questions about what Club SOAR is and want to have more discussion or have Mrs. Marsh share some things about how we're utilizing it, certainly she can inform you more.
That would be great.
Mrs. Marsh?
Good evening. I don't have a question. I just was hoping you could share some information so that the public would know about this program.
So it is a local organization that's in line with Accord Hospice, which is a, a group up here that provides services for our community. And the local coordinator had reached out to us. They have a camp SOAR that they do during the summer. And they actually had a lot of leftover materials because they, they had limited access because of COVID. And so she came and presented to our entire mental health counseling team. And it was, it was perceived to very much be a need that our counselors are seeing at all, like K-12. And so they were very excited to join forces. We're also just huge proponents of wraparound services and wherever we can pull in our community. And so this is a, it's not an individual intensive therapy with students, but it's really just a broad overview of, you know, dealing with grief and loss in your life and then helping students understand how to build some grit and resiliency and meet those challenges. So we feel like it's a, it's a great way to join some forces and provide some additional services for our students.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Marsh.
I'll entertain a motion to approve.
First, can I just say, you know, I, I'm really excited about this program. From the background that I have, looking through the material, it's all really good stuff that if that can be provided to our students at, it sounds like no cost to us other than inviting them in and having our counselors spend a little bit of time working with the programmers. I think it's a wonderful thing, and I'm really glad that you guys are going to this effort to get it in our schools. So, thank you.
I'll make motion to approve the Club SOAR implementation and curriculum.
A second. Did you have something else, Brad?
Yeah, I'll just say, you know, oh, no, that's, I, I, I thank you for making the motion for the second. One of the things I'm actually was working on, I have been working on in my role at Navajo County is we're trying to get a peer support group going for law enforcement officers because, you know, they deal with traumatic events on a regular basis. I have a brother who's a sergeant at Cholo Police Department, and he's doing a command staff, a command leadership course right now through Northwestern University. And the project that he's doing is exactly like this, but he's doing it for law enforcement officers. And so you can kind of see the need, not only for students at the high school and the, you know, the junior high level, but also individuals who, as they go into adulthood. So I think this, this is something that's very vital and something that's very timely for us to do. And so I think it's great that we are bringing that in and doing it for no cost at the, you know, for, for the district, the one that my brother is working on. And, and I'm excited to see what he's able to do with it. He's going to do a phenomenal job is to be able to bring that to the region. And so I, I know that the, the model that he's emulating is not going to be, you know, free. And so I think that this is something that's great that we are doing for a, for no cost to the district. So thank you, Ms. Marsh and your team, so.
Need further discussion? Have a motion and second, on favor?
Aye.
Closed, motion passes. Item 6.1, approval of revised position, Mr. Houseley.
Currently, as you're, you're familiar with, we have a vacant position as a child nutrition director. We haven't filled that, that spot. So we've been exploring different ideas, different thoughts around it. We've talked to other districts. Ms. B. Kraft has taken some time to explore the different options. And, you know, I met with the child nutrition department last week and talked about what some of those options that we were exploring. One option obviously would be to just reestablish a child nutrition director. That's one option, districts use that, we used it. Another would be to go with a third-party provider. The problem with that is that it's a long procurement process. The state has to run that procurement process, so it's several months out. As we were talking to others who use third-party and, and, and have looked at other models, one thing came to the surface, and Vanessa shared it with me the other day, and I thought, well, you know, it sounds like a really good idea to at least explore. We wouldn't be any further behind. And that is a model that was used in, Round Valley went with a third-party provider. They chose one that they weren't satisfied with, and so they backed out of that contract. And they changed from a third, a third-party provider, instead of going back to a child nutrition director, they went to a child nutrition executive chef. And what they found is, is that currently, our person who's the interim director, she does all the paperwork and manages that piece, and she would continue to do that. In an executive chef model, they help work with the employees to increase the quality of food delivered to the students. She had a conversation with one of the students from Round Valley, and, and they were talking how awesome the food was. That's one of the best things about being there, right, is the lunches and things. So we don't know the, the market out there for an executive chef-type person, but we currently have our position labeled as an executive director, oh, not executive director, child nutrition director. And we would like to change the title of that to executive chef so that we can begin to explore, if there's even a market out there for us to do that while we still look at the third-party provider option. So we want to, we, we need to approach this with multi-pronged, both trying to figure out, all trying to figure out how to improve the quality of food that we deliver.
Do we have a revised job description?
The first step was just to change the title. We would bring the, the job description back. Really what, what is eliminated from, what we anticipate eliminating from the child nutrition director position is the, the level of oversight, the personnel, director's personnel focus, and the chef would be recipe and delivery of food focused with the cooking staff. They would be integrated that way.
So we would actually have two positions?
No, we wouldn't have a director, we'd have the executive chef in the current position that we already have that handles the reports of the state.
So who would be supervising the people in that department?
There's two prongs to the supervisor. So the executive chef, because he's the cook, he's the one developing the recipes, he provides oversight. He or she provides oversight to the, to the staff. If there's issues that need to be resolved with staff, that would be worked with, with the executive chef. But his focus would be on recipe.
Creating the menus and.
Recipe, and then the director already does. It's just a change of focus, where the director's focus is on people and less on recipes. The kitchen staff produce the recipes and. Whereas he would be changing the focus to.
Can I just add something? I think the main focus of a director of the food service is paperwork. You're dealing with the state, you're dealing with the budget. We have Ginger Bishop, she is the current food service bookkeeper, who would fill that capacity. She's familiarizing, she's picked it up since vacancy. So she would take care of more of that, like the paperwork. It takes a long time, I mean, the reports and all the, with the USDA. And that would allow the chef to work on the recipes, talking to some of the ladies. We haven't updated recipes more than a decade. Kids are not excited about our recipes. Like, we really want to get the kids excited about the food, so.
Would there be a change in pay structure for this position, Mr. Houseley? Or would it stay the same?
I don't anticipate that. We, we would have to work a little more closely with the modeling that. We, I would want to work closely with the modeling Round Valley has in place. Don't anticipate it. But I know Round Valley to, to help because an executive chef that works at a resort could be high dollar, right? So, but what they do is the executive chef works the four days of their school week, and then he works at a resort the others, over the weekend, because that's where the demand is. So it works out well, I'm not saying. It works out well. I'm not saying we're going to find that exact cozy fit, but we want to explore that. And, and if, if we went with a third-party provider, what they would do is they would have a kind of a chef that provided recipes and made sure the integrity of the recipes were throughout. And Ginger would still fulfill the position that she's currently doing in a model that we're, we're trying to build out here without having a third-party provider with their hands in the.
And if we do get the third-party provider, the first thing they recruit is an executive chef. So it'd be the same candidates, I think. I mean, job pool, hopefully. So we're just, it seems like a good direction because the, the other process is going to take several months. It's not something that's going to be implemented by January.
What would take several months?
The RFP, the procurement process because the state has to supervise that.
Well, then you have to publish it. It's usually like 60 days. And then you have to open them and then you have to go through the process. So this could be up to 92, 100, or 92, 120 days, so.
I would really like to see a job description. I think it, I would just like to see one. Has that been done yet?
I'm working. I have several preliminary. We're kind of drafting it, but it.
Putting it together. Okay.
And part of that job description, do they have to wear the white Chef Boyardee hat? Is that like a requirement?
Yeah, of course. Mandatory. Is that something you could bring to us in the December meeting? Job description, great.
And if you don't feel comfortable approving the name change right now, that's fine. The way we, until the job description comes out, that's okay. But I think more so tonight, what we wanted to accomplish is just to feel if there was any, any interest in moving in that direction. It's one that third party is going to put in place anyways. If we can get that in place and not have to go third-party, maybe it's beneficial. We don't at this point think that if you weigh a director chef versus an executive chef, the executive chef brings more pros in concept because they focus on quality of food, nutrition and delivery of recipes that people are going to eat more of.
But would there be a difference in the minimum job requirements for that? Like, like for a director position, are we, do we have certain education requirements? And then with the chef, we would have lower education requirements or how would that work?
It requires that food service directors have a certain level of education. And that varies based on the size of your school district. I'm not sure the, the complete answer to that because currently, for example, Ginger holds some of those, she holds those requirements. So having an executive chef, but they have to have those. If we went to a directorship, yes, that person.
In some of the bigger schools, I know it's a bachelor's degree. In this case, I think, I'll have to get clarification. I think they do accept in lieu of that would be like a culinary.
Or years of experience or something.
Yeah, like, you know, because they have their own executive, like there's credentials on an executive chef that would meet that experience-wise. And then, you know, they, they graduate from culinary school, so they consider comparable.
That would be for the executive chef position. I, I think it's a good idea to move in that direction. I think that it would be, that, that it, that makes sense from what you're talking about is as far as updating our recipes and making sure that we're following the nutritional guidelines that's put forth by the federal government and making, you know, our, our cafeterias somewhere where our kids want to eat more and to develop that. If the board's not ready to vote on it tonight, I would say that, you know, I would, I would move to table this matter until we got a job description if that would make everybody else feel more comfortable. But I would say that's right. I, I would be open to the idea of moving in that direction, wanting to revise this position. But I don't know what was the rest of the board want to do. Do you guys want to vote tonight or do you guys want to table it?
We can have your recipe during the interview.
We have taste tests or something? I mean.
Try them out.
We make sure they've also appeared on Diners, Drive-Ins and Dives.
That would not meet the guidelines.
The job description. So then I'll move to table item 6.1, approval of revised position to December, our December meeting, and request that when we meet on this again, we have a job description and a salary structure and an education requirement for that.
Well, I guess my question before I vote on that is, is there a reason you want the name change first? Like, would it be beneficial to have the name changed before December? Or will it, will it slow you down if we wait till somebody changes their name?
I, I don't know if it'll slow us down. It just was the seven guide to start to framework or, put framework to the thing. Because if you were like, ah, executive chef, forget.
If we all said this is a terrible idea, then we wouldn't.
And we put all the frame, we put all the backward.
Worked into it.
Worked into it and then it didn't come to fruition, it would have been.
So it won't slow you down if you table it? Okay.
I'll second that motion.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No any further discussion? Motion passes. Item 6.2, approval of resignations, retirements and terminations, Mr. Housley.
Madam President, members of the board, 6.2 has a number of individuals there. One, one teacher, health tech, two paraprofessionals, finance secretary, discipline, T, our teacher assistant, and three in transportation for your consideration this evening.
I'll move to approve the resignations, retirements and terminations as outlined in item 6.2.
I'll second it.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item 6.3, approval of new hires, renewals and transfers, Mr. Housley.
Madam President, 6.3, these are in the board docs. There are a number of them, so they are there for public view. If that's okay, I won't read through them. All I do want to point out that one thing that Chris has began to do, if I have, if, if we haven't been able to meet with them to set the salary, she is placing the salary range there so that you know what the range of those positions are as well as she's connected as an attachment to the board docs. In the public view, the actually approved salary schedules. So I hope that's helpful in understanding where these, these individuals would fall in the range.
Sorry, in 6.2, can I clarify something? So we had a teacher resign, which comes with the assessed liquidated damages of $1,500. Is the board?
I, I, when I made my motion, it was assist, the, it was outlined that there was assessed liquidated damage of $1,500. So my motion included that she would be assessed those. So I don't know if that, whoever made the second included that.
Yeah, you said as outlined.
Yeah, so that's, that's how I, was my intent.
I was just making sure.
And then I'll move to approve the new hires, renewals and transfers. They were provided to us before the meeting and I was able to review that. And I would also say that one of our new hires is Mrs. Bales, who my son is in her class and absolutely loves her. So I hope that we approve her because I don't want him to have a different kindergarten teacher, so.
I'll second that motion.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item 6.4, approval of substitutes, Mr. Housley.
Certified substitutes Holly Coronado, Carrie Holcomb, Tonya Baker, Caitlin McKenzie, Zachary Christensen, Claudia Layton, Mark Munoz and Hannah Todd. As a classified substitute, Bridget Massey for your consideration this evening.
I'll motion to approve the substitutes as presented.
I'll second.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item 6.5, approval of stipends, volunteers and event workers, Mr. Housley.
Madam President, members of the board, those are in as an attachment for your, for your review and public review. There are a number, number of them, so I won't read that list off. That's okay. For your approval this evening.
I do have a question. Under the, it seems like we have a lot of volunteers for the junior high volleyball. Is that just because we need people to drive our white fleet to games and stuff like that? Because it's, are those people actually going to be volunteering and helping with the coaching of the stu, of the students and stuff?
I can't answer that question directly. I, I don't have the answer for that. Maybe, do you have an answer to that, Mrs. Clark?
So there's some on here under, they just kind of put all of them, so there's, there's several that are.
Like volleyball, but not all of those people were.
Oh, okay.
For example, if you look at the Heelys, they were, they drove white fleet for the high school volleyball.
Oh, okay.
They drove it to the first round of state in Tucson.
Okay. Okay. I'll, I'll move to approve the, the stipends, volunteers and event works. It sounds like some of this stuff's already taken place and we're retroactively doing it. So probably covering for insurance purposes or something like that, so.
A second. On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item 6.6, approval of contract work and assignment revisions, Mr. Housley.
Madam President, members of the board, for your consider under 6.6, one of the things is we're working through redefining the summer, summer camps to make sure that all of our athletic teams have the opportunity for summer camp held here and not just a football-dominated July. One thing that we used to pay is a camp coordinator to, we would pay a per, per athlete fee to that camp coordinator. And they kind of organized it and ran it. That was, I believe, Ms. B. Kraft, you can correct me. I believe it was $10 per student or per camper that we paid as far as that fee. We're not going to have to utilize that under our current model, but we do need administrative assistance through, through that to manage the camp fees, the registrations and everything with all the sports that are going to be participating in those camps. And the intention is to have all of our teams be able to do that, not just a football-dominated July and run that through June and July. So we are proposing that we move Mrs. Alan Suella to a 12-month position from 11-month and that the balance of that will be paid through summer, summer camp proceeds, which normally would have been paid from, or to that organizing person. And it, it is a cost savings.
I'll make motion to approve the contract work assignment revisions.
A second. On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Just, I, I didn't say the second one, but I know you, you caught it in your, your motion. The second one is Mr. Holliday is a bus driver. He is one of our certified trainers. He will be training people that come onboard and he was at minimum wage. So the, the adjustment is a reflection of his skill and ability to train.
Right. Item 7.1, approval of second reading of policies 712 through 715.
This is our, our second reading of, of these policies and for adoption this evening. I do bring them for you, for your consideration. If there are any adjustments that you've had over the last month that you would like to make to these policies, this would be the time for those adjustments.
I'll just, these are essentially, we had to revise our policies because a judge found that the state legislature acted unconstitutionally when they passed their budget and they threw in a couple of items that affected education. And we passed a policies based off of those legislative statutes that went into effect. And then the judge essentially said that they were unconstitutional. So we have, we have to make these adjustments or else we'll be in violation of the court order. So I'll move to approve the second reading of policy advisories for 712 through 715.
A second then. On favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
And I'll add to what Brent says that in a couple of months, we might have to change them again.
Over again.
Because our attorney general is asking the governor to call a special session to reconsider these individually. So maybe, I don't know.
Motion passes here.
Maybe some of them will come back.
It's passed for now.
It's passed for now.
They'll be back in front of us.
Be back in April.
Yep.
Item 8.1, discussion and approval of revised stipends. Mr. Housley has issued 7.2. Sorry, okay. 7.2, approval of policy GCBC, Mr. Housley.
Madam President, we, we discussed this in a work session earlier. Policy GCBC has been in policy, but it was without regulation, without exhibit. So just for clarification, policy, regulation is put in place to manage the policy. Exhibits are the actual documents that you would use to carry out the policy. And it, it's entitled professional staff supplemental pay plans, compensatory time. And then it, it talks about, it walks through the policy, but there was no way to manage that. What did it look like, K, K through 12? And so this was reviewed. We, we talked about it in here. The administrative team walked through it, did some research on it. And before you this evening, what we would like to propose is, I wrote the wrong, the wrong thing. We have, as you know, we've had a, a large demand, well, not large. We've had a lack of subs and we're, we're not alone to that. Even, even other, all of our surrounding districts are, are down. I don't know the validity of, validity of this fact, but Blue Ridge, it was mentioned that they are down for four sub. And some would say it related to pay. Some of the districts that are in shortage are paying significantly more. So I think it's just a matter of a combination of a lot of things that could be part of that. So there, there's a lot of things that go that, well, what, what happens is it puts a large, a high demand on our, on our teachers. It puts the demand on their time, their prep periods at the elementary level. It's, oh, this teacher's out. We're going to disperse this class of 22 amongst the rest of the five that are there. And it happens pretty consistently. So in reviewing this, as outlined in the regular, or the proposed regulation, we've given some definition to the policy so that the teachers who are covering can earn some compensatory time to give them some, something in return for their efforts. Because while, while it can be said that their prep period is part of their, is part of their contracted time, it does mean you have to sacrifice something. You put, you put something on the shelf. We were talking, I was talking to a superintendent today in a rather small school district and he said, yeah, I subbed all last week. Well, he didn't put his superintendency stuff on, he had to put it on the back burner. He had to keep doing it unless he had to be the substitute. And so that demand is put on our staff here too. And so we want to look at that. And so it's outlined in the, in the regulation there. We would, I would like to propose that this is retroactive back to the first day of school of this year. You know, some of the, it's my understanding that the principals have been tracking that with their staff that have been covering, but to some extent, and, and they could go back and reward those days or times that they.
Because as of now, has any, have there been any kind of, has anything been happening before now?
As of now, it's just been something that they've been doing.
Okay.
And did they see the regulation? Are staff members, are they aware of it and were they happy with that?
I can't speak to that from my, my seat. The principals work, worked through, we worked together through it. I don't know to what extent they, they got feedback from their, from their staff. Certainly some of them can speak to that. But we, we felt like there, there's, it's a hard balance because secondary features are different than elementary features. And the scope of their day looks different. So this was an attempt to try to make a good faith effort to try to meet at some point in compromise and trying to figure out what, what might be justified as far as a, an outreach. If it's a first step, then it's a first step, but it's a.
One, one thing I'm confused about, so it looks like the actual regulation has been in, I mean, the actual policy, the GCBC has been in the manual. And what we're adding now is the. And what we're adding now is the, the regulation. So were we not following policy up until this point? If we haven't been offering that compensatory time?
The policy is very vague in, in how it was supposed to be, how it was distributed. And so up to this point and to even, I don't know how far back, there hasn't been compensatory given in this, in, in outlining. So to your question, yes.
And did the, are the school attorneys look at this? Is, I mean, is it okay and?
Yeah, this is, this is a common, this is a common practice with.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there anyone who, who was here who would have any kind of feedback about how teachers would feel about this? Can we ask if there's anyone who would want to offer any opinions? Can we do that?
I don't.
No one has anything to offer? Okay.
You had, uh, Mrs. Zimmerman.
Can you come up?
You can come up.
So if you're offering compensation time, like time off to those teachers, and there's a shortage of subs, like how will that play out? That just doesn't.
Compensatory time inside of our policy is paid out if they don't use it too. So there is a financial benefit should they not use it. And it does, in the regulation, it outlines that it, it can be rolled over or used with.
Okay. Well, I just, I mean, just kind of logically, if there's no subs to be put in classrooms, then it would just continue to accumulate. That was just a question.
Thank you.
I, I like that we're at least doing something, you know, because I think we should be doing something to show them that we appreciate all the extra effort they're putting in.
I agree. Does this require two readings or just one reading?
This is just a regulation. It's not an adoption of policy, so.
Okay.
I'm hesitant to approve, to make a motion to approve since we don't know if it's actually gone out to staff. But like, I, I think you said, Mr. Housley, we're at least doing something and working in the right direction. So I'll make a motion to approve policy G C B C.
I, it looks like, so we have a staff member who raised their hand, so come on up, state your name for the record.
My name's Gary Whipple. Just a quick question. Can you answer what is the compensatory payout if we don't use it for the event?
It becomes undifferentiated pay, just like we receive right now.
So we would receive that in full payment even?
When you, if you were, when, when you separate from the district, your undifferentiated pay is paid out according to policy. And that's when it would be paid out.
Do we have an exact amount as to what that is per undifferentiated hour?
No.
The one undifferentiated day for a certified teacher is paid out at twenty-five percent.
Only twenty-five percent? Okay.
Of their daily rate.
Okay. All right. That's our question.
Anyone else?
Did we review it? The different grades or different schools?
It, because I thought there was a discussion amongst all the admin and there was support. I don't.
So, yeah, okay.
Thank you, Kevin.
Mr. Holliday.
Speaking on the, from the standpoint of administrator, it really, it concerns me when we have a staff member, for example, that gets sick and they're not able to come to school, a teacher. And then, for example, I might have six in a grade level and I have to split up a class. And the teacher, teachers have to take on added responsibility. I support something like this that would help them receive some, you know, some effort for what, for, excuse me, some compensation for what they're doing with their effort. It, I think it's seven. Mr. Housley, remind me, Dan, was it seven? They have to build up seven days or?
Seven, seven times that they've done it.
Yeah, so we've only had to do that, speaking from my school. We had to do that in fourth grade this week where we had to split up the class. Fortunately, we've had subs that have covered, but our sub situation is getting more and more desperate. If teachers have to take on more responsibility, I would like to see them compensated. So, yeah, I like, I support something like this from the standpoint of administrator.
I know I've had my grandkids, you know, come home and tell me that they were, you know, had three more kids that day or four more kids or whatever. So I'm very appreciative for the administrators, you know, kind of doling them out and for our teachers for stepping up and taking care of them and teaching them.
When you add five more students to a classroom for the day, it puts, it puts more stress and, you know, more effort that has to come forth out of the teachers.
Can I ask, Mr. Hall, about substitutes?
So have you guys considered or would any of your substitutes, if we increased our long-term pay, that they would contract out like a month and just be floaters and just go to K-five schools and you guys would fill the biggest need so you know you have a sub every day? Or junior high through twelfth grade, if we could hire someone and they would just fill in where the greatest need is? Would that be something you think would work? I know that everyone keeps saying there's no subs, but I'm wondering, I know the same subs keep subbing. So you know you have good subs in place.
I think the more and more we can be creative to help recruit, you know, some people to come and get a little, even substituting requires some training. You can't just throw someone in classroom and hope that they're going to be educated for the day. So, um, but I think we need to explore opportunities to, wherever we can, to be creative, to get people to come and support us and help us. I hope we don't get more desperate than what it is right now.
Thank you, Mr. Hall.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Guys want to move ahead?
Okay.
Debbie and Becky.
Oh, and Becky.
I don't know that any of my teachers are here, so I guess you have to take my word for it. But I have talked to them about this, that this was coming and have been very intentional about keeping track of every single day that they've covered for someone. And looking from a thirty thousand foot view, what I value about something like is in front of you is that it, it equalizes the sacrifice of a K-five teacher and a six-twelve teacher, right? Because it looks a little different in a six-twelve day. Yes, you're, you're giving up your prep period to teach something outside of your content area. But you have that time. And I think for an elementary teacher, sometimes that looks really different. So even though I'm at the junior high and I represent those, those teachers, I think it's incredibly valuable to remember that sacrifice of a K-five teacher because they give up when the librarian's out. They don't have a special, right? I mean, it just looks different in their day. And I will tell you that before this school year, the teachers at the junior high school, and I imagine that the other principals would say the same thing if they stood up here, were doing this anyway without a regulation in place. There's been a policy, but for all the time that I've worked for Sholo, I'm except my first year, we haven't had a regulation to support that policy. And so the junior high school teachers were covering for each other and doing it for free. I agree that our, our sub list is shorter than it has been thanks to COVID, but I think that the demand for subs is also greater than it has been, right? And we've had some days where we had a couple of people out that were ill. Then you get somebody who gets a phone call from Whipple Ranch and their kid has to go home sick and they need to go home and be with their child. And, and it just can take on a tumble effect. So you might come to work and think, well, I only have one, one sub in the building today. And by ten fifteen, I have six vacancies. That's really difficult because when you have two or three or five at five schools, that's where we're seeing it. So we have a, a depth problem in terms of what we need for subs that we didn't have before. Before this school year, I, I was buying people's love with Starbucks gift cards, right? I mean, that's really sometimes the only tool you have. But to see people step up and do it anyway, what, what I'm super excited about for this is I can support them, right? They were doing it anyway. Now we're just saying we support you and, and it's something. And, and I think that to me, that's kind of an exciting piece, that this big list of names and dates and who they've covered for, we can put it on paper and they can, they can have a value added to that. Thank you. So yes, like Becky said, we did talk to our staffs about it. For K-five especially, we haven't, we've, there's never been a compensation for covering a class. So the difference is if you're a secondary teacher, you cover a prep time when a teacher isn't available seven times. You do that seven times and that equates to one day. As a K-five teacher, you take on a portion of a classroom for the entire day seven times. And that equates to a day. When we first started talking about it, my comment to Mr. Housley in our admin meeting was, I'm never going to have any K-five teachers that are going to have to do that seven times. And so I don't see them ever being compensated. Well, I currently have one grade level that's at six days right now. So six times this year, they have already covered for another teacher in their grade level. I think it's a step in the right direction. I'd like to see us go a little bit further. Because my worry is what happens if a teacher covers six prep hours and then the year ends? You never received compensation unless you get to the seventh day. So I think we have to have consideration, what happens if a teacher does it five times? What happens if a teacher does it six times, three times? We have to get to the seventh time before we turn around and compensate. So that's something that I'd like to see us grow into, is where we're recognizing every time we ask somebody to do it, we're valuing that prep hour or that day that you took a portion of the class.
Is there somewhere we could take, tweak it so that we could do some sort of proportionality if they don't reach that seventh day?
You mean that they're still compensated?
Yeah, that they're still compensated for whatever percentage of, you know, however, whatever seventh that they did do.
In leave time, you have to, have to put a value on it. What is the value of one? What is the value of one in this regulation? And so you have to value one. I don't know how it would look on the, on the business department side of things to start, and the tracking side of things, the actual, you know, the clerical end of tracking point seven fives or point six six or, or whatever that would look like. Perhaps I haven't explored that, that piece.
Maybe that's something we can look at, Vanessa.
Yeah, I, well, I think that, because the, when we, when we get these, let's say, because the secretaries at the high school that handle the substitutes are going to keep the data. So let's say they come over with their fifteen teachers that have earned the one day. We add those in. So I don't, we're going to be adding those in as they come available. So I guess the only time, because when you have to push it to, you know, the next year would be, okay, we're at the end of the year, Kelly, you only got six. Like, so we would take that into account at the end of the year. Does that make sense?
Pay that percentage of what the six.
We could look into converting what that.
What that would equal.
Towards the one day. I don't know how that would equate to them taking a day off, coming.
Or maybe even, you know, like if they do up to three, then that would be like a half a day, right? I mean, could we do it that way and look at it that way and maybe do it in half days for the K-five?
Or could they choose to get that paid out since they're probably not going to get to use it since they're already short on subs in full like that semester? As opposed to carrying it over?
And we could, we could look, I'd have to run statistics to see what that would, that would cost, that would look like dollar wise.
Okay. That'd be great. It'd be good. And I forgot to say in my motion that, to go retro to the first day of school. That's what you recommended, correct? Okay.
Did Dr. Taylor, he raised his hand a minute ago?
I'm just a parent, so I don't know all the rules and regulations, but I'm wondering why, if we have a shortage of subs, let's play the game of if we had enough subs to fill all these, they would be paid their sub rate, correct? So I don't understand why the teachers aren't being paid the rate that the subs get. And if it's split between classes, then split the rate. That doesn't make sense to me at all. You know, I have children who complain because the subs are not great. So if you want more motivation in that, I don't, I don't understand where the ball's being dropped. And I know that there's always budget and money and saving and finances and it's messy and complicated. But maybe you can help me understand why the teachers aren't just getting the rate that you would give, excuse me, that you would give to the subs anyway.
So I would say the first issue with that is if I'm paying, let's say, a kindergarten teacher and they're there that day and their cohort is out and they take over that class, like contractually, I'm already paying them for that day. I don't, this is why it's in the policy, to do the compensatory time. I don't know that we could, go, like, you know what I'm saying, double pay for, for their time.
That doesn't, that doesn't matter. Like paying the subs, why are you not teaching? I mean, that's a very large task. There is added stress to teaching. I mean, you have four children. Give me four more children, the day is wrong. You know what I mean? Add four children who have completely different, different networked classrooms that are now. Who have. The list goes. Not double digits. The need is great.
Like, it was, like I said, contractually, we're paying them for that day. So I'd have to reach out to the auditors to see if that, it's, it's public funds. I agree with you. I, I can't make that decision and just say, okay, I'll pay you. Like, I, I, it's not my discretion to say so.
Well, in some certain circumstances, that, wouldn't they be, some of them be getting more than what like a half day sub rate would be? Or some, you know, because of their contract amount and their daily rate of pay? Am I missing something here?
So, so the, the question is, you know, the, the part of this, what, what this offers is an opportunity to earn compensatory leave. Then you could either take the day off or it converts to an, uh, undifferentiated leave, which you're compensated at twenty-five percent of your daily rate when you leave the district. If that's a year, that's twenty-five years from that. So in reality, the, the longer you stay in the district, the more value that would have. And so to say it's comparable right now today, what, what the policy, what the regulation puts out is, it's an opportunity for it to take a leave or to have the delayed payment when you separate from employment with the district. What, uh, what was just talked about is having that not be delayed.
Paid down.
Payment and pay it upfront.
Okay, gotcha.
The, the value to say one is of more value, that's, that can be debated because we, the, there's a variance in the daily rate of pay from teacher to teacher even. So, and the longer that you're in and, and calculated raises and other things, that daily rate of, of pay increases. When we went from a hundred and eighty-four contract days to a hundred and eighty contract days, that daily rate of pay increased. And it would have affected this policy on the payout on the uncompen, of the. And it would have affected this policy on the payout on the uncompensated, the undifferentiated leave.
Yeah. Did your administrative team talk about that, about just, you know, compensating them at, you know, in that pay period? With the money that we would utilize for a substitute? Was that discussion had? And if it was, why did you guys not?
I remember at least mentioning the idea in one of our board retreats, I remember saying divide the, what we would pay a substitute by seven and can we pay all of that to the teachers? I know that was at least discussed, so.
Yeah, so we have discussed it. We ran the numbers. If you wanted to pay them out on a sub rate, then for the one time they cover the class at $14. Versus, you know, the time of a, of a, having, earning undifferentiated time, the ability to take time off. It's, it's your value, my value. What I'd rather value have, have the opportunity to take a day off or have $98 in my pocket. I'd rather take a day off. So it's six of one, half another than the other. We can, we can debate the validity of that all day long. It's valued at the same, but your value is different than my value because you want $98 and I want to go to Mexico. Right? So that, all that was considered. All of the things that you're all talking about, we talked about. It's November. We've been talking about this since August. It's not like we just dreamt it up last night. So whether it's this piece or another piece, we're going to have, we have 300 employees. We have 135 teachers, 135 different opinions will come to the surface. So this is our best effort at this time in our current financial state, to be able to make an effort to say, thank you for covering. It is a need. It wasn't even in place yesterday. Right? We have a chance to put something in place today that wasn't in place yesterday and we're, you know, yeah, do we want to go further? Certainly, we would like to pay them all as much as we possibly. But that's not reality of where we are right now. This is a good first step. If we want to go further with the first step, then we need to pull this back. And we will go back to the drawing table. But there has been extensive work done in this. And repeating that word, just tell me what you want. And we'll bring it back to you. But I can't go through four months of process again. I won't.
So it could be significantly cheaper for the district if we did go the substitute route? Because somebody who's been with the district for 20 years or longer, their one seventh part of their day is more than $14. That's, is that correct?
Could be, but that's, that's where we're also, it just depends on when you're paying it.
So essentially, instead of doing, paying the substitute rate, we're actually providing more compensation to our teachers. If we delay that by either giving them a day off or letting them pay it out when they had some future date.
You could, and it chooses, you're able to choose the value. What's valued to you?
I just, I.
Can you state your name, please?
Yeah, my name is James Zimmerman. So a question is, clarification. So basically, I would have the sub or fill a class in for seven days, seven times.
Seven periods. Depends if you're a high school teacher or an elementary teacher.
So to earn one full day pay, day off, right? But if I cash it out, I only own, earn 25% of that.
Of your daily rate, not of that. A daily rate for a teacher could be anywhere from $230 to as high as $400 a day. 25% of that. And it's paid out at the end.
Plus the tax on top of that.
Everyone laughs because they don't think that we do have teachers at $400 a daily rate. So yes, that's what it would be.
So the other part of that is, so it might, it'll be the teacher's choice, in this case me, to take the day off in a future time because I earn it, bank it, right? Or take the cash out whenever, at 25% of that rate. But if we already have a shortage of teachers and a shortage of subs, and I earn a day off, when, when would the teacher be allowed to take that day off?
In the policy. In the regulation.
I think it's like five days in advance they need to.
Teacher may use no more than two days at a time. A teacher cannot accumulate any more than five compensatory days per academic. Unless there's an extenuating circumstance, the administrator. They can carry it over one semester. And then once it's carried over after one full semester, then it turns into undifferentiated leave that they could take at any time. Or when they separate employment with the district, they would pay, pay it out at 25% of their daily rate.
So.
Yeah, for that to happen though, you would have to do this 35 times to accumulate five compensatory days. And that's in our, our school year is 144 days. I mean.
Okay, that's the max you can do in a year.
Yeah.
It would be hard to get to.
I appreciate that you guys try and put some effort in to compensate the teachers, the teachers for filling in and taking on the edge stress for the extra, you know, kids in the classroom and stuff like that. But I don't, I don't think it's going far enough as a parent. Thanks.
Well, I would just like to add that these are unprecedented times. COVID has wiped out every planned policy for any school to try and cover every class appropriately. I think the district's effort was to fall in line with the current policy as it reads. Would we not have to change?
You want to change the policy as it reads, we have to go through two readings. And so we could, we could change the policy as it's outlined if you, if that's the desire. You'd have to do a first reading in December, a second in January.
We would also want our attorneys to look at it too. So I actually think that we are moving in a good direction. And if you guys, you administrators can expand on it or want to expand on it, or maybe get feedback from staff and then choose to expand on it, that's great. But I'm going to keep my motion as it.
And I, I agree. I think this conversation isn't useless. But at the same time, like Mr. Housley said, a lot of work has been put into it. We didn't just come up with it yesterday. This has been discussed in other meetings. And I think this is a good place to be starting. And if we decide we want to make tweaks to it in the future, we certainly can. But I'd rather have this go forward now than just making tweaks forever and nothing is actually happening. It's at least a step in the right direction.
Sorry, I should have stated my name before. I'm Brianna Trigaskis. And I want to say that too. I think talking about this and brainstorming is the best way that you get to any possible solution. And I think it's wonderful that you're willing to be open minded and think about it. As I'm sitting there listening and just hearing what's being brainstormed and talked about. I also think about you have teachers who teach for a short amount of time, right? Maybe they only teach for two years because the need was really great at the time at certain schools. And so they're subbing and filling in, but they're not ever able to cash out that time. Because I've heard lots of teachers say that they'd like to take time off, but because substitution is what it is. And they don't want to just leave their class to anyone. And I know that's, well, that's your choice. You can do what you want. But if the, the sub situation is so dire and it's hard to get a good sub for your classroom and then you don't take it. And then you're never able to cash it out. And I know I said this before and I, I know it's all very messy, but just pay them. Make it black and white. Here's your compensation. Instead of like what he's, what Brad was saying, that you're actually end up spending more money in the long run. Just pay the money. If you sub, here's your compensation. It's done and move on. And then it's fair because if you don't work after two years and you weren't ever able to cash out all of that time, what do you get for it? It just doesn't make sense. I'm all about simplifying. And to me, that just seems extremely black and white in regards of you did the work, here's the pay.
At the same time, if we do it the way we're talking about now, we can make that, we can vote on that right now. They've already been keeping track and that's going to start immediately. If we go back to the drawing board, it's going to be lots of more meetings. We're going to have to have a whole new, whole new thing. So we're talking about maybe sometime in the spring, something could actually happen. I'd rather see what's already been worked on happen right now than try and get something better that maybe someday will happen.
Oh, sure. And like I said, I'm all about the brainstorming of whatever it is, but sometimes I feel like, you know, sometimes I feel like things could be more simple. I don't know. Does that make sense of what I'm saying? Just that it could be more cut and dry than what it is. And there are some teachers that just don't, they don't work for a year, you know, after this one. And then they never even receive the compensation for what they gave in the first place. And that doesn't seem right. Anyway, food for thought. That's all. Thank you.
Is there a reason we didn't just do like at end of semester a stipend or something?
What'd you say?
Is there a reason we didn't just do a stipend at the end of the semester if they subbed a certain amount of hours and paid it out?
Yeah, I hate stipends.
No, I know, but sometimes they're just a simple fix for things.
That's why.
I hated to even bring it up, but I'll be here till 11. I'm going to switch spots with Lamista.
So, so let me, let me bring this real quick. So let me, it sounds like we have a substitute problem from what I'm, I think the overarching issue that we're garnering from this conversation. Do we have some form or some like brochure? Like I remember when I was in private practice, I met with the, it was Mrs. Bishop. She had an individual who was like the part of the Future Business Leaders of America. And the firm I worked for, we contracted with one of her students to develop just a simple brochure for advertising for part one of the services that the firm I worked for that they did. And we, we paid them, you know, an hourly rate and stuff like that. Do we have something like that that we could develop? That is like, do you want to be a substitute in Sholo Unified School District? And then have in there, here's the criteria for it. And if we could develop that, put it on our social media pages, put it out there. And hopefully we get flooded with a whole bunch of applicants who may not know that we have a substitute shortage, right? Like, and obviously we would need to vet them. We're not going to let, you know, a lot of weirdos into our school district. Like there would be a process that we'd have to go through to get those people. But if we put out there, like on our, on our front door, this is what we, we need, right? Like we have a dire substitute need. And we, we advertise that through social media and maybe there's flyers, you know? And we, and we tap into the resources with the, you know, with the Future Business Leaders of America. And I'm sure some, you know, there's, there's got to be an organization that could help us with that marketing tool. Can we do that? Is that something we could work on and get there so that, so that somebody who might recently moved into the district who may have a teaching background, they may not have a teaching degree or something, could say, you know what, I don't, maybe I'll apply after the first of the year for a job or something. But right now they don't have a vacancy for what I'm doing. But we could at least get that word out there. Is that something that we could do in the next?
Interestingly, you say, Mrs. Fields has already.
Yes.
She produced a thing, a little video and it says, come grow with. It's been out there a lot on social.
Was that in one of my emails I didn't read? Am I outing myself as not reading my emails? Is that what I just did?
It's been on social media. And we have partnered with Northland Pioneer and there's their brochure, substitute teacher. They have, they've put together some coursework to develop. Like was said, you can't just throw anyone in the classroom. They need some, some support.
Yeah.
They've, they've offered to run classes to help with that. October 30th is the first one, was, was the first one. November 6th was the second one. We still don't have very many subs. And that was targeted at the population of people who are going to school and may not have time for a regular full time job.
Yeah.
And so we've targeted different populations. We've powered social media. We've targeted, I mean, Vernon told me today what they pay for substitutes and they have a sub shortage.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's, it's real.
Are we in the middle as far as what our sub rate, the pay is? Or are we at the top?
We're not at the bottom.
Okay, well, that's good. Yeah.
Okay, so it sounds like we're doing that and Mrs. Fields has the information specifically if somebody says, I want to be a sub. What do I need to do to do that? If I don't have a bachelor's degree, you can tell them exactly what they need to do?
No, she doesn't have that. She produced the, she produced the, the social media post that's been out. She helped produce that little video for not only subs, but paraprofessionals and bus drivers and that was all in there. It's a little video presentation. Very, very good. If they, they go to our district office, Mrs. Sloan walks them through the process.
Yeah, okay. So following up with that, it sounds like we're in the initial state, phases of that. And we're, we recognize we have an issue and we're trying to address it. So with that, I will also say that I think that this policy that's been presented, I appreciate the work that the administrative team has done on it. I think that it is a step in the right direction, that we want to compensate teachers. We want to give them that opportunity. Is it perfect? No, right? We're in Arizona. We're dealing with education. Probably it's never going to be perfect. So what I will do is I will second Kelly's motion that it will be retroactive. And I think that we would encourage that discussion to go. And the reason I want to state why I'm doing my, the second is because I think that it gives, I, I, I think that it gives teachers the opportunity to make more either, either time off or in the future, a higher rate of pay than what we pay our substitutes. And that's why I don't think that I want to go back to the drawing board at this point and have to read, you know, first reading in December, second reading in January. If at some point you feel that like there's a component of that that you want to bring where we, where we would give the opportunity for a teacher to have a direct payout at a substitute rate. I think that we could tweak our policy with that. But I think that we need to get this in place now and that there's an opportunity for our teachers to make more off of the way this policy reads than if we reverted it back to just paying them what the substitute rate was. So that's why I'm seconding it and I think that we should pass it.
And I want to just acknowledge something that Mrs. Clark said is that this has always been something that the teachers have been doing. It's not like we're trying to convince them to be willing to do this. Of course they were willing to do this because they care about the kids and they're amazing. And they're not going to let their kid, the kids not have a teacher. So this is one little thing we can do to say thank you and we acknowledge the extra effort you're putting in because they're amazing.
All right, I'm going to interrupt one more. My husband was. So, reality on it. They aren't as hopeful as. I've never. A lot of this. Reality is. Well, that. I'll call that. A whole tomato spin, something that was. I'm. Where people are. Is. I only say that just. Now.
I have a first and second. Do you guys have any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you everyone for working on that. I am eight point one, discussion approval of revised stipends. Is this you, Ms. Housley or Mrs. Beecraft?
Um, Mrs. Beecraft, can we walk you through some of this? We can partner on this as we move through.
So to preface this, I would just like to say that coming into this position, our district faced a sizable deficit. And my task at hand was to look at all items that may have not been reviewed ever. And certainly this was one of those, those items that was really, really tough to tackle. I just want to make sure and apologize to any staff that it did affect. It was never, gee, I want to look at this certain person or this group of people and I want to take away money. That was never the intention. The intention is our district had a deficit. Our district has been living, we've budgeted out to the penny, a lot of times over the penny. And we, we can't get ahead by keep doing that. My goal and my intention was to, we need to rein it in. It needs to be, it needs to be formalized. We need to have it in a, in a, like it makes sense and something that we can afford that could be sustainable. Before, if one person leaves, another person comes in, their salary was 10,000 more. The stipend just exponentially goes up and down. So having a stipend schedule was very important. I know Mr. Marchant spent a lot of time with the extra duty salary schedule. It's on there as well. So this is basically just a relook, I guess. um, as well. Um, so this is basically just a relook, I guess, at what the board wanted to reconsider.
As you can see, there are four, um, four options presented. Do you? Can you, yeah, can you, yeah, it's on there. Um, so there are four options there under the public content that you, uh, for your review. Um, just for your information, um, there are some that obviously are, are more feasible than the other options. Um, to attack this, we, um, there is a fund called the Instructional Improvement Fund. Um, we use that fund um, as a contingency. For example, um, kindergarten needed support with para professionals. Those were put in place using the, the instructional improvement. So that is where that this fund, the, these monies are intended to.
Mr. Marchant, can I ask you a question? So I know the prep hour stipends that were taken away, that was with the idea that on Fridays you weren't with students as long. And I know you're with them, there's, teachers are with them longer now on Fridays, aren't they? Are you there, are they with student reteach until eleven or is it only till ten?
Eight, eleven.
Eight to eleven? And then they're there till one with free time? Or is it till three every other Friday?
It is one thirty.
Hypothetically. Okay. You guys have any questions?
Well, I'm the one who asked for this to be put back on. Um, and I don't know. I, after some information was brought to us and um, the lack of some communication. I know that there was some communication with some and not quite with others. And so I wanted to revisit this and maybe look at um, implementing um, some of the funds um, that were taken away previously in our motion and maybe adding that back in.
Do you like one option more than the other or?
I think here what everybody else has to say first and still looking at it.
Grant, do you have any thoughts?
Um, I think I've expressed my thoughts on the whole matter um, multiple times. So I don't know that I'm gonna add anything new at this point.
Lamista?
I'm, I'm trying to make a little bit of sense of the, the four options here versus the options that are kind of outlined in the, the four options in the document for Mr. Marchant. Those are totally different things.
Um, the document Mr. Marchant represents just the high school.
Just the high school.
So what's here, and obviously these are four options. The board can make its own option. You could keep it, you know, the way that was already approved, whatever the board.
So I'll kind of go back to some of the things that I've, I feel like I've said it at every single meeting. That I think this process of looking at the stipends was an important thing to do because we needed to be able to be saying there's some reason for why this stipend is what it is and this is why this person is getting it. And it has to make sense across the board and be fair within each school and across the schools of the district. And so I think the process that went through on the whole was a good thing to be doing. Even though in some cases that means some people ended up with a decrease in their stipend. Um, the thing that concerns me the most about what, where we ended up is there are several people who signed their contract with one idea of what was going to happen. And then things were changed when we actually went to vote, you know, months later. Um, and for those people, uh, I know that you guys have told us that it's a stipend, we can change it, we can take it away. We're well within legality to do that. But that doesn't matter to me very much because it's about the good faith that they placed when they signed their contract. Thinking that this is what they would, would probably get, or at least they had some reason to believe is what it would be. And if that isn't what ended up happening, I, I feel like that is where we should be reconsidering our actions. For the people who sat down with meetings and with Mr. Marchant and helped decide, helped, you know, collaboratively figure out what their stipend should be and it did go down. And they knew it was going to and they signed the contract and I, I don't think that we should be changing all of that work that a lot of times that staff member participated in. So I don't want to say that we should just say, well, everyone should just get what they got last year. Um, I, I, I don't want all of that work to have been for nothing and I think it was valuable work. But the part that kind of gets me is that this, the subset of people who weren't communicated to that that was going to happen when they signed their contract. So that is the, the subset of, of stipends that I would be most interested in seeing changed and not necessarily because it shouldn't have been changed, but just if it was going to be changed, it needed to be communicated and we need to be, we have some good faith with those staff members.
That's how I feel too. And I think when we were, when we discussed it, it was about alignment, not so much as a cost savings. And we can start talking about that now for next year. So everyone knows, but for me, I feel the same way that the people that when they signed their contracts and left in May, they thought they were to make, make, be making this amount of money. I'd like to rectify that.
So Stacy and Saina, are you talking about the red and the purple or which, which ones are you referring to?
Um, I guess I personally would have gone off Mr. Marchant's chart that he gave us in his recommendation and this has been changed so many times. I don't even know what that is.
So Mr. Marchant's did not include the junior high um, employees at all. But we did approve what you did present to us for the junior high. So if we were to add in the red and the, the purple, then those, that would be the additional uh, forty-three thousand, four hundred and nineteen dollars. Correct?
If you want to go with that specific option and do both.
Okay.
Both groups of employees.
Would there be people from other schools who would be members of that group too? Who signed their contract with, that's what I don't know. Or is it only from the high, that's only, only the high schools included in that though?
So you would basically say if, if you wanted to do the red and purple would be option three and four. You're gonna restore prep hours um, and math stipend.
I have a quick question just for clarification, Mr. Marchant. What is S and C coach? What does that mean? Okay. And did the, it says we have a new advisor took over the position. Was the reason why the person um, did not, I guess, renew for strength and conditioning? Was it because of the reduction in the stipend?
No.
Okay. And then that also the concession was that because there was a reduction, it said there was a new advisor. Was that because of the reduction of the stipend that the person did not take that over?
In part, that individual told me that they were.
Okay. When, was there any other parts on these that were, the individual did not take that or did not take that role or stip, stipend because of the reduction? The, the reason I ask is because it seems like if we vote to say we're gonna, you know, restore the red and the purple, um, I don't know that there can be a full restoration of that because some people may not have taken those positions knowing that there was gonna be a reduction. Once they found out, at some point, it sounds like in August, they might have. Like, like our, our teen court, is that the same person who did it last year?
Yeah, I, I, I see what you're asking. Um, no, I do not believe that our K and the red or purple still, it, it backed out of it as, as of the.
And, and our, our academic decathlon teacher, that's still the same person? And our, our um, I guess our robot lead, robotics lead, they, they got an increase, right? So the only two people in the purple and the red, there's only two positions that are new, new this year that weren't the same as last year? Is that a true statement?
Um.
Cause I, I see under, I see under strength and conditioning and then I also see under concessions that we had a new advisor. Is there any of those other ones that would be considered a new advisor?
No.
Okay.
There are a few new that aren't listed on that chart.
Uh-huh.
There are a few brand new prep buyouts that happened.
Or like?
They were never doing it before. We had a new robotics prep buyout. It was never in the past. Had a new uh, CTE um, course medicine. Was never in the past. Those, those are not listed on there.
It's important for the board to note that prep buyouts are demand based.
Yeah.
They're, they're, they're because you have one section that you need to fill and you can't hire a teacher to teach one section. So you compensate a prep hour, you buy that prep hour so they can teach one additional section.
And, and so if we, if we went with, said, we're gonna vote to red and purple, that's deals with all of the changes that occurred with the stipends from the, from last year. Is that a correct statement?
Yeah, if you did red and purple, red is anything that went down at all.
Okay.
Purple is it went down and they didn't know that that went down before they signed it.
Okay. And Mrs. Beecroft, where, if, if we did that, it would be the tune of forty-three thousand, four hundred and nineteen dollars and eighty-eight cents?
And plus thirty-one thousand, four hundred and thirty-eight.
No, that would be.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right.
Red and pur- so.
I read the whole thing.
Um, so uh, Ms. Beecroft, where would, where would we get that from? Where would you recommend that would come from like?
Um, so as Mr. Howes, I mentioned, we can use the Improvement of Instruction Fund.
Mm-hmm.
Um, which is where we've uh, funded a kindergarten additional para this year. Um, and they, they can go, it can also go for teacher compensation.
Is it gonna take away from, has that money already been allocated for something and we would be taking it away from something that it's already been allocated?
Uh, we, we do have several other postings for paras for the classroom size reduction, just to help, where we can't go hire a new teacher, but having another para would help.
We have positions, is, I mean, is there like cost savings right now because we're not actively paying for those positions that that would probably possibly come out of or? You know what I'm saying? Like what, like right now, we're not paying a salary for some positions for para professionals. So is there a cost savings in that budget that we're not you know, paying for the last maybe month or two or something like that? Or sometimes we hire people at a lower rate than what the person was before. So there's a little bit of, you know, uh, salary savings in that. Is that, is that something that we could, that we're gonna do or is that?
I'm, I'm sure there's, there's some of that and there's some on the flip side. You replace someone that's very expensive.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so I'm sure some of that could fill in the gap. Um, but certainly just to ensure that it would be funded, we could use that. And then obviously whatever I can, you know, in the variance of people coming and going, can use. I just, I would like to say though that this, this isn't gonna be a permanent, like we still don't have a schedule in place and even looking at um, the schedule that Mr. Marchant and his team uh, put together. So they, they indicate here that, and they've labeled it all A through M based on a certified base, uh, this, the base salary of a certified teacher. So they're saying, okay, if you're going to be over concessions and this takes X amount of hours, it's valued at G, which is six and a half percent, which is two thousand, one hundred and twenty-two dollars. Um, our district desperately needs something like this in place. So this is not going to fluctuate. It doesn't go up and down with who's filling the position. Maybe you get more because, or your salary is more than mine. Like budgetary wise, that's really hard to do from one person to the next.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I would just like to say on the original, um, I guess um, proposition by Mr. Marchant and the team, the L and M, those are the prep hour stipend amounts. I would highly recommend and encourage, like that's probably what we're, we are going to have to move to something where it's a set dollar amount. It doesn't fluctuate with your salary. Um, so in looking at this, um, and, and some of the, like specifically the, the math stipends at the high school, um, they don't fall on this chart anywhere.
Mm-hmm.
So how do you define that? How do you, I know we have a lot of work to do. We need to define what are the hard to fill positions? What is that value? It's not on here. Um, but certainly this isn't like over with and I, like we still have a lot of work to do to define what that looks like and put a salary schedule in place um, that can roll forward and it's not gonna vary year to year. So that is the goal. It's just.
Right.
Um, we're not there.
But we already did approve this before, didn't we?
Oh.
We did.
No, if you were to approve this, that would put all the prep hour stipends at those rates, which are all decrease.
Yeah, right now we, what we approved, it wasn't just one-seventh of the teacher base. It was one-seventh, but prorated for only days that there's.
Was.
Actually.
It's one-seventh of your.
Based on their.
Salary.
Salary, not the teacher base.
Okay. So this is what we're working towards then, what you have in front of us.
Something that looks similar.
Got it. Okay. Well, I would like to make a motion uh, to implement option two, which is to revert um, the red and purple stipends back to twenty twenty-one. And I know that there is an increase, but um, I think that that's the right thing to do.
I, I'm not sure if I'm on board with the red ones because it looks like the red ones, these are people who the communication was there. So is it that we don't want anyone to have any reduction for any reason? Or is it that, or is it, is the key part about the lack of communication? Because if it's about the lack of communication, that's the purple.
Yeah, that's.
It's not the red.
That's what I think too.
The, the people who are in the red, they, those, those individuals had meetings. Most of them were involved in the process of figuring out what would be equitable. And there was a decrease, but it's for a reason that was adequately communicated and, and, and understood when they signed their contract. So if we're just trying to not have anyone have any decreases at all, then what are we doing?
Okay.
I.
See, I, I would, I think that, uh, I, I don't agree with some of the reductions in, in the
Oh, okay.
Um, you know, I, I think our academic decathlon person.
Grant, can Kelly's motion, was there a second before we move on? Or is that? Kelly, there is no second to Kelly, so that tabled right.
She probably died by now.
No, I, I'll second it then, so we can still discuss it. Um, so I'll second her motion because I think that we and, and, and again, I'll go back to what I've said from the beginning. My feelings on this has not changed. I didn't, I don't believe that. And I think I said this when this was first before, brought before us. I don't think that we should reduce um, what we're paying our academic decathlon uh, coach, because I think that even though, cause I think that the numbers that we took from that were from other districts and I'm okay overpaying an academic decathlon coach who just won state and took our team to nationals. I'm okay overpaying a teen court uh, person because we're one of the only ones who does that up here. And I think that it brings more value to our community than six thousand dollars and some change. And so I think that even though that might have been communicated to them, I didn't agree with the original reduction back at the beginning of this. And so I think that there are ancillary programs that we have that have much more value in the community than we've placed on them. And so the same thing with the driver's ed. Um, I know that, that quantifiable, we have a certain number of students, we have time, but those, the value that they have is far greater than a few dollars here. And I think that, and I, and I've said this since I've been on the board. You know, we, our priorities are, 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 come out in our budget. And my priorities as a board member are to ensure that programs like this not only happen, but that they thrive. And the same thing with our math department and with our science. And I, I for one think that if we restore those to what they were last year, we make sure that the other people in the green who have received these uh, newly created stipends, those are not taken away. And then we work on this over the next year so that this is actually notified to the people in the purple, um, that, when they, when they're signing their contracts and doing all of that. But I, I just don't think that we should have cut some of the ones that we did in the red. So that's why I'm gonna second Kelly's motion.
Okay.
Can we have more discussion?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So the problem I see with that is that you're inherently saying that the, that these people who have historically had these higher stipends for whatever reason. that these people who have historically had these higher stipends for whatever reason are worth more than someone who is a newly created stipend because we're not going to overpay a new stipend. But you're willing to continue to overpay an existing stipend. Whereas I think what we should be looking to do is make it equitable, whether it's a stipend that's been going on for twenty years or whether it's a new one, like the robotics you mentioned.
Mm-hmm.
So why is something that has been historically overpaid more valuable or worth more than the upcoming things that we wanna be able to, or if we wanna be able to give our, you know, elementary level head of department heads a stipend? We want to be able to bring in new, new programs like robotics. If we keep overpaying certain places, we're not going to be able to do that. So I don't see why, if, if, if they were looking at it and trying to make it equitable, maybe you don't agree with the metrics they were using to try and do that. But that's what they were tasked, tasked to do. Try and make their, make, have some sort of rhyme or reason as to what the stipend is. And if we're saying, we trust you that this is how much we should pay these new stipends, why don't we trust them if they're saying some of these should come down?
Well, I, I guess I would say that I, I think that two of your premises, I don't agree with. The first one is, is I don't think that, um, we've overpaid these people.
You, that, I was using your words, that you say that you're okay overpaying certain stipends.
Well, I guess I should've said that I'm okay paying more than other districts because of the value that they bring. So we would overpay them by paying them more than what like the academic decathlon teach, uh, person has in Snowflake, right? Like they, I think they get twelve hundred dollars. And so we've overpaid them more than what Snowflake is. So it's not, um, you know, my words in the context I use was they were not overpaying them because they're not bringing the value for that pay. We're overpaying them more than the districts that we utilized in order to gain the metrics on what we were going to pay them. And the second one is, is I think that we, I, I don't know that I buy into this whole idea of the, of, you know, of, that everything should be equitable, right? Like if you're bringing home a state championship for our academic decathlon team, I want that person to get more compensation than the person who, who just clocks in and does the very bare minimum and does not, you know, does nothing, does just enough not to get fired. And so I think that that's problematic in government in general. And I, you know, as working for a government entity, this is the problem, right? In the private sector, we have the ability to go and give people bonuses and to go and, and say, hey, I have a friend who works in the private sector. If you did an amazing year and you met all of your goals, here's a trip, here's a bonus, here's something like that. And so the, but because we're confined by the Department of Education and we're confined by certain, you know, gift clause and all that kind of stuff, what happens is if you have two people in the same position in the government, we say this person's a rock star and this person does just enough not to get fired, then what happens is the person who's the rock star starts getting all of the work. Because if somebody else has a problem, they say, who am I gonna go to? The person that's gonna respond in a month or the person who's gonna respond in twenty-four hours? And so we create mediocrity by making sure that everything is equitable. And so I don't buy into that. And so I don't ever think, like I said when I started this conversation, I didn't buy into the whole metrics of this because I think that we should compensate people in different mannerisms by the value that they bring to the organization and to the community at large. And so I, I don't, I just kind of reject this idea that everything should be equal because all we're doing is incentivizing certain people to do just enough to not get fired. And then we're gonna compensate them at the same rate. And that's the problem that we have is when we give an across-the-board pay increase and we say, we're gonna give everybody a five percent increase. Then you know what happens? The person who's been putting in more time and more energy and all of that, and they see the person who comes in right at the time that we tell them they have to be there and they're the first car to leave as soon as students leave on Thursday afternoon and they barely stick around on Fridays. I just got a five percent increase and they got a five percent increase. Why am I trying to push and why am I trying to do that other than our own internal desires to be great? And I think that that is problematic and I don't want to, I don't want to be a person who celebrates that or encourages that in any way, shape or form. So I, I didn't run for that as a board member. I, I always will look at Sholo is the best. I'm a, a son of Sholo. I graduated from Sholo. We should be the best and we should lead by example. And I just, I reject this idea that somehow we have to follow other districts in the region because we are the leader economically, uh, job growth, everything, every other community in this area wishes they were Sholo. I don't think that that, we should settle for that in our school district. That's why I think we should go with red and purple.
I think you and I have a very different idea of what I'm talking about when I'm saying being equitable. Because what I'm talking about is when Mr. Marchant sat down with each person who gets a stipend and talked about, what do you actually do to earn the stipend? There were some people who did a lot of work and were barely getting compensated. I want that, that excellence that they're doing. They're not the ones leaving the, leaving the parking lot the minute that they can. They are the ones putting the extra effort in. I want them to be compensated fairly. This is what I'm talking about. I'm not talking about just giving everyone an equal amount, but the people who, but they, they decided where these should line up on the effort that is being put in. So I'm not saying that the people who were in red aren't working, you know, aren't working hard enough or that the people who got an increase were working hard, but they were basing this on something. They weren't just making guesses. So I don't understand why you seem to think I'm saying that by being equitable, I'm saying that effort doesn't matter. What I'm saying is effort does matter and we should be rewarding based on that effort. So there are some stipends that are based on a position where there's a lot of work being put in. I want them to be getting compensated for that work. But at the same time, there might be some people who their stipend isn't as much work, but has historically been compensated at a much higher level. Why should they continue to get compensated at a much higher level if they're not putting as much effort into it as someone else is to get to that same level? I'm saying we should be rewarding the effort that is being put in. And this is the only information that I have as to how much each stipend, how much effort is being put into that? Because he sat down and talked to everyone, what is, what is required for this? So what level would make sense for you to be compensated versus whatever has been historically been going on, which may not be anything to do with what the current effort is. So I, I don't disagree with the things you, that you were saying, but I don't think if we decrease some stipends to make it make sense within the larger package, that is what we'd be doing.
I just don't think that we can quantify the, the, the value that we're saying that, well, if you're an academic decathlon coach, you only impact seven or eight students. And therefore we're gonna compensate somebody else who might have thirty students. I just don't think that that value is something that we, that, that it's, uh, the right approach to value it based off of just specifically the number of students in that. And that's why I haven't agreed with this rubric from the beginning, so.
I would just like to add that the ones, um, in red are considered extra duty stipends. They're doing something extra to get the money. So let's just say, like, I heard some students really bragging on the student council um, sponsor, Derek Whipple, bragging him up. He's going to prom, he's going to homecoming, he's doing all of these extra things. Um, if, if you look at his either value, they're, they're fairly close. How do you, how can you say what you just said? If you look at the, the ones that the board is going to grandfather in, then the math that are upwards of two and a half times what we're, we're saying his time and his effort, which is phenomenal, phenomenal according to the kids. How can you say that?
Say what specifically? What are you talking about? Like, I've said a lot, so explain to me what you're talking about.
They're gonna grandfather in, uh, an eight thousand dollar math stipend. Um, but then feel that it's unfair, um, like on the other side.
Talking about math stipends or are we talking about red ones? Which one are you talking about?
Well, if you say red and purple, that includes the math stipends.
I know, but you said that you were, I think that your conversation was whether or not the red ones are extra duties. And then you used Derek Whipple as an example. So then now you're bringing in purple. So I'm not, and I'm trying to follow what you're trying to make, but-
I'm saying if you're, if you're doing them both, it doesn't, it doesn't even fall along the, the same line.
But I'm, I'm trying to understand what-
Cause if we're gonna consider stipends and, I mean, the idea of a stipends is extra work for extra pay.
Mm-hmm.
So you're saying that it's based on performance because Academ went to nationals, they, they, they should be more.
I, I, I don't think that what I said could be, um, simplified to just that it's based solely on performance. I don't, I think that's a misstatement, so.
Okay, that's how I interpreted what you said.
Yeah, I, 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 I don't think that was the only reason I said that it would be, it would be solely based off of performance. That's not what I said. I also talked about the value that they brought to the community, the value that they bring to the students. It's not just the, um, the amount of, uh, based off of, simply off of performance, so. And then I'm still trying to follow where you jumped from red to purple and brought Derek into it. Still, that doesn't make sense to me.
I would like to call for a question.
Hi, me again. Um, you guys are really tired of seeing me. So-
I don't think you can come up and talk right now. I think we have to vote before we can, uh, entertain anymore.
Okay.
Yeah. Sorry, James. The procedural issue.
Do you have a motion?
Question.
Provoke?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Uh, motion and second on favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay.
Nay.
Next one?
We consider another motion if there is a motion?
I think James can come up now. If you, come on up.
So, listening to all this tonight, um, a couple things come to mind. One is you're talking about the current school year budget, right? Teachers being compensated now. Okay. So I'm not a teacher, obviously. I don't have the patience to deal with it. But if I was, and I would come to work for you guys, okay? And then as I find out, I'm gonna get, my paycheck's gonna be short halfway through the school year. See you later. Okay. Second thing is, do we not want to attract and retain the best teachers we can get? Okay, so we should pay them as much as we can, how should we pay them? Third thing, what districts are you using to compare? Are you using St. John's and, you know, any other districts in the area? Or are we using valley districts, which is, I'm sure we're not, cause the pay is horrible? But we want to attract and attain, uh, the best we can get. And the other part of this equation is housing, cost of living up here. People don't, um, appreciate how much it actually costs to live up here. You know, and I've heard over the years, you know, well, you could live in the mountains, that's part of your conversation. That's not true. Okay? Groceries are more, gas is more, housing's to the roof. But now you wanna, so you wanna lose a teacher that's been here for eight years, ten years, five years, and is established and has a house, who can have a house payment and a mortgage that can afford to lose them and have them go somewhere else, make more money. Now you try to replace that teacher, they can't afford to buy a house, nor less find a house to rent. So if you can do everything you can to retain the teachers we have and compensate them accordingly and also attract new teachers, I think that should be the goal of the board. Thanks.
Thank you.
A motion, Lamista? Different? I didn't like that one.
I guess I'll, I'll go back to that. I think that the process was important and valuable. And the reason I'm not in support of the motion that did not carry was that I feel like that would be saying all of that work that was done was meaningless, other than we gave more people stipends, but without trying to make it all make sense. Um, and I'll go back to my belief that the, the main crux of the issue that I have with the whole process was the lack of communication. And that I'm uncomfortable that there were people who went into believing one thing and then it, it changed. So I guess I would make a motion to, how do I word it? Um, to change the, to, to revise the stipends based on the people in the purple category. So that they would go back to what they were previously, um, for this year with the understanding that that may not be the case next year. And I would hope that, that we would, um, be quicker on getting our stipend package together so that by the time people are signing contracts, they already know what they're signing up for. Um, I don't, that's not part of my, um, motion, I suppose, but my motion would be to revise stipends based on the people in the purple category where there was a lack of communication. Or what, since we didn't pass it until after they signed.
So I, I have a question for Mr. Marchant. So on all of these red ones, when were, when did the decision for the reduction, when, when were they made? When were they notified that the reduction would happen and the final amount would be that they would be given? Like with the, with the teen court one, with the choir, um, wh- when were those specifically given to the, the people who are now holding those positions?
Yeah, um, they vary, obviously, but I, I would say all those-
That they were given the, the exact dollar amount they would be reduced?
Um, yes. They, they were given what would be on the proposal. In fact, they, they all, all those match up to what, um, our board discussion was. I think that was Mark. It, we had a, just an open discussion. There wasn't anything for vote. Um, and I showed you, that was the first time I showed you guys that whole table and all the values, everything.
That was May-
Those matched what was presented at that.
That was May seventh. And on May twentieth, Mr. Marchant reported to you in a formal presentation that he had visited with all staff members about the stipends with the exception of those who were affected from prep hour.
Mm-hmm.
What he presented in his presentation on May twentieth.
Okay. And when, when were contracts signed by our staff?
They were late because of the state legislature and the budget.
Yeah, but I mean, what date was that?
It was just, you approved them, it would've been the first part of June is when they were-
Do you have a motion on that?
Just the purple, Lamista?
Yeah, that's the motion on just the purple.
Can I make a motion?
You can, you can.
Okay, I'll second Lamista's motion. On favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay. Hey, motion fails.
I really hate to see anybody take a reduction in pay. I just think with the times right now and everything that's being added on to all of our staff members and I am the first one to admit, I made an error when I voted, um, this in to begin with. And that's why I wanted to bring it back to try to rectify it. Um, I just don't like seeing people make less money.
And I don't think any of us do.
Right. And, and I appreciate, you know, what you've said as far as, you know, making things equitable and all the work and time that's been put into it. And hopefully we did add enough positions at the lower grades, you know, to hopefully make up for some of the inequities that we had with stipends. Um, I just don't like, I don't like the feeling of giving people less money. So that's kind of where I stand with the red portion and-
So let me, let me say this, okay? So we're talking about equitable and we're talking about, you know, we wanna make it fair and we're, we're basically quibbling over twelve thousand dollars, right? And we have a budget of, what's our annual budget, Vanessa?
It's close to sixteen million.
Sixteen million dollars, which is less than a percent. Like, not even one percent, right? Like, all the math whizzes here that we have. It's, it's miniscule, right? And so we're gonna tell the, all of the people in the purple, because what, because both mo- motions failed, then we're just left with what we've already approved a few months ago, right? And it seems like all of us can agree on the purple. And so in my mind, I would think that we would want to be generous of the, to the tune of twelve thousand dollars as opposed to not let all of the people in the purple not get what they want, even though they were told it's not guaranteed, but they, they were given, it says the math teachers were informed that, uh, Mr. Marchant would be requesting that they were grandfathered in, but that didn't happen. They did not know about- that, uh, Mr. Marchant would be requesting that they were grandfathered in, but that didn't happen. They did not know about the reduction until August upon their return. So it would seem to me that we, as a board, would want to be more generous by giving the red than, and also all of the purple than by not allowing the whole purple or the red to go forward. That's just my personal thought on this whole thing. So if it's gonna cost us twelve thousand dollars, let's err on the side of giving that to those people. Let's communicate completely, fully, hopefully in April, we can have, in my mind, I would, I would envision that, that, uh, when contracts are sent out, that if I'm a, a teacher for the Shola Unified School District, like Mr. Zimmerman had alluded to, we're gonna say, we would like you to return next year. Here is what we're going to compensate you with. And all of that's gonna be laid out, very, very clear and very articulate, and then they can choose and make an informed decision on whether or not they're going to, you know, sign that or not. And so we can make that happen this year. Like, we can, we can make sure that all of the work that was done is not done in vain, like Lamista, like you're saying. We can make sure that we are taking this year as a, let's work with them, let's make it whole. I've sat on this, this, uh, this dice for three years now, and what I've consistently heard from all of us is that we want to be fair to our employees, we want to be kind to them, we want to, you know, we want to be giving, w- w- let's, as a board, be charitable, or whatever you wanna call it. I don't wanna use a charitable, because then I'll be accused that we're gifting some money or something like that. Um, that we're going to write this, and all it's gonna cost us is twelve thousand dollars. That's my personal feeling, appealing to it. So, and let, or, we're gonna say, no, everybody else in the purple, you all suffer. That's, because that's essentially what it is right now.
And I don't disagree with what you're saying about the twelve thousand dollars. And if we have another motion, I might vote differently now that the purple did not go ahead. My concern is when we're ma- when we're, when we're doing this for next year, are you once again going to refuse to have anyone go down a little, even if the work that they're putting in for that stipend, it's appropriate for that to go down a little? Are you, again, not going to let that happen? In which case, we're going to have to make it kinda be, make sense as a whole. Everyone's going to have to go up. And I'm not against paying everyone more, but you have, especially you, Kelly, have talked about this being fiscally responsible. So are we going to be willing to do that or not? If we're willing to do that, then that's fine. Um, but I don't wanna just get into the same thing every year where we'll, it'll continue to be imbalanced, where we're being shown how we can balance things and we won't follow through and do it. So I, I would want to have some sort of commitment that when we do the stipends this year, that we really be more intentional, be, pay more attention, and make sure that we're on board when we do it the first time, instead of having to come back around.
I would say, I, I, I can't ever say how I'm gonna vote in the future, right? Like, I, I, that would be a violation of open meeting law to say, to articulate how I'm gonna vote in a future potential agenda item, but I have always said, I, this year is an, is a corrective year. Let's give adequate notice, let's, let's, if we're gonna do it this year, I don't like the way that it was done the previous year and moving forward. I don't know that I, I, I just don't ever, unless there, like, we, like, in two thousand nine, I could see why we were reducing, uh, teacher salaries, we were reducing staff, we were doing those kind of things. There was a huge budget deficit. Um, I just, in, in my mind at this point, I don't know why, when we have, we, we, we don't have those issues facing the district right now. Like, currently today, I know that there are some variables that could affect the district if the legislature doesn't act and all that kind of stuff, and there's a lot of things up in the air. But, um, I, I just don't know why we would be taking money from our teachers when we're not, our hand isn't forced yet, so.
The only thing I would say to that, like, you make, you make a good point. Everyone's made valid, and I appreciate the thought that you're putting into it. The only thing that makes it different than two thousand nine is two thousand nine, your hand was forced because of economic pieces. You had no way to even supplement your cut.
Mm-hmm.
This year, the board chose to supplement the cuts with one point five million dollars in, in.
Mm-hmm.
So it makes the, the cut less, it doesn't make it less painful, it just makes it less deep, right? And so those, that was some of the balance that was considered, and, and appreciate that that was considered. Um, but I know that, uh, you also mentioned that you didn't want that to be considered as part of anything. It was just a thank you for, for suffering through the, uh, seven semesters of. Gone, right?
Yeah, I get a little.
Yeah.
I, I appreciate that too. So i- if somewhere in the middle, you can find, uh, a compromise or, or, or a place, I do think that, um, you know, Mrs. B. Croft has demonstrated that we have, uh, a place to provide this, whatever choice that you, you decide to make. And if we can make a compromise that, that airs on, um, fiscal conservancy, but also um, airs on the side of the things that you mentioned and taking into account our employees, I think that would be a good compromise. You all make very good points, but at some point, we're probably gonna have to find out what the middle ground is, maybe?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
I, um, I don't know, you know, I look at some of these stipends, you know, uh, because they are the larger, um, stipend amounts, but I know the people who are in those positions, and they've been there for years. And I think maybe that's why they're increased, um, you know, and, and they're making more money. In the red, I'm talking about, like, teen court, cultural exchange, acadak, choir, um, concessions, but I think we have a new concessions manager, if I'm not mistaken. But I, I look at the people who was like in concessions, but the other ones that are above, and they've been there for years. And I think that's why they have the increased amounts, and I don't know, I, you know, they're valued. They've, they've put in the time and, and they've sta- stuck with us for years, and I believe that's why their amounts are so large. Is that true, Vanessa?
Not necessarily.
No, like teen court, next.
That specific one, yeah, she has done that for a very long time.
Cultural exchange, they both.
The cultural exchange, I don't know.
Mr. Hall has been here forever.
It's being revamped. I'm not sure, just to the constraints of leaving the country, that's why that was kind of, Mr. Marchant probably stick better to that. It's, it's on hold because typically, I mean, traditionally, the, the cultural exchange goes to Mexico, and then they do a spring trip, they go to Europe. Like, that's not going to happen this year. Which I think, unfortunately, okay, yeah, I think that's why that revision, not that there wasn't value there, or that we wouldn't reenact that in the future. Just, they're unfortunately not gonna be able to take those trips.
So the, so the companies have said, no, not happening, or like Europe and Mexico?
I think what you're, what you're expressing is what we're hoping the solution comes out February is to have a schedule, because then you would know.
Mm-hmm.
Right, because there, there hasn't been a, an adequate litmus, but any of, not, uh, unfortunately, it's a hard discussion. We start to apply litmus's to things that haven't. Um, you know, my kids hated when I gave them boundaries, and, you know, after going days without them, right, they hated that. And I understand that, but when you start to look at these things, it's gonna be, it's gonna be difficult and, and, uh, we're, we're not there, we will be there, we will be there with, uh,
Okay.
That's what your frustration is, I think, is you just don't have a litmus, you don't know what it was based.
May I interrupt now? Hi, I'm Dr. Diana Abel, and I teach at the high school. I'm an early childhood teacher, and I'm also the supervisor of White Mountain Work in- internship. And I've been texting with a colleague who couldn't come tonight, and his comment is what urged me to come and, um, share this with you. I think that this decision, if it's a twelve thousand dollar decision, and I don't know if I'm on the purple or the red list, I, I don't know, and I don't really care a whole lot. Um, you know, I'm still doing the job that I was hired to do, but I think that the morale at the high school is probably worth your twelve thousand dollars. Um, I've, uh, this is my fourth year. I retired out of America Community College System, and, um, this is my retirement job. I turn seventy next month, so it's not like I'm going to school every day, because wow, I'm just a bouncing forty-year-old. Um, but when Farrell Adams hired me, and I asked him, what are you looking for? He threw my resume back at me and he said, you. I have a doctorate, I have a bazillion years. Chad didn't give me all the years that I asked for, but he was fair. Um, and you do, um, as Mr. Zimmerman mentioned, you do wanna attract the best. My daughter teaches the same thing in the Valley, and their morale is so bad, and it has been so bad in the Valley, in the Tempe Union High School District with the teachers, for about four or five years, that I've been bragging to her that the morale up here, the teaching environment, my teaching conditions are great, until this year. I'm one that got, I think, about a twenty percent cut in the stipend that I did. I was not sure what it was based on, but, you know, I, I'm not doing this job because I need the money, and I'm not saying that I'm independently wealthy. I have a good retirement from the Community College Act, where I got paid a whole lot more. But I'm doing it because I love to be here. But I have to tell you, I told Dr. Taylor today, and I told Mr. Marchant, about a week before fall break, I had my checkbook out. I was gonna write that fifteen hundred dollar check and leave a resignation letter. And I called my daughter and I said, man, I'm about to do something I never thought I'd do in my life. And she said, I can't believe this is you, mom. Promise me you'll take till fall break. Just think about it. So I'm glad I did, because I'm still here. But I have to tell you, I've watched my colleagues, and the low morale is kind of contagious. And I don't think you guys want that to snowball down the hill. So that's what I'm asking you to also throw into your equation when you think about this. Because sometimes money, money never buys you happiness, but sometimes money does buy you goodwill. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Taylor.
I'll just echo what Dr. Abel just said, and Dr. Taylor, I, I guess I'll give them kudos right now. I also serve on the executive board for the Shola Chamber of Commerce, and we asked Dr. Taylor and Dr. Abel to come and to present their internship program. And from that, right, as, as we're talking about stipends, I think every person on the executive board for the Shola Chamber committed to hiring your, um, your students, right? And we have on the executive board people from Summit, from APS, from small businesses and large. And so the impact that that program is making is, is, we can see it in the community, but I don't know how you quantify that when it comes to this. And I, and I, I for one would be, you know, um, remiss if we lost that type of program, because we're just starting to scratch the surface to see what it's capable of becoming. And if it loses that momentum, it's gonna, it's gonna be detrimental to the program.
Like, I'll use my. The other thing is, Mr. Housley asked me to participate in the community, um, effort, break more preschool classrooms. Because we do not serve the, the citizens of Shola well. And I've been working with an Akron, um, nonprofit last year, year and a half, and, uh, we are making progress in rehabbing the building. Nicholas Homes, where it will not only house a veterans' reentry program, women infant and children nutrition program, but starting off four, uh, classrooms from infant. So it does, what, what you hired me to do, what you asked me to contribute, it does buy you life. And it does improve quality. Reason I, pardon me, reason I'm living up here in, in Shola is because I believe this community serves those kinds of. I could stay in the Valley, but I think I need, need to have that quality of it. I need to have people who, okay, you paid me a little less, but I'm just still there, and I didn't, I didn't give you that check, and I'm, I'm, I'm hanging in there. So like I said before, I think you ready will buy some goodwill and raise the morale rise. I can't talk about junior high and elementary.
Well, I'll say too, we're in the process of doing a million-dollar renovation to the parking lot of that building, and it came from the work that the team that is renovating that building is doing. It's, we're, we're putting a brand-new parking, uh, fish, parking lot and asphalt and all that in that area.
Are you referring to the city, Chris?
Uh, the city, the, uh, Workforce Investment Act, uh, Workforce Investment Act is the one who got the, it's a one point one million dollar grant to rehabilitate that facility, and then the partners that they have are the ones who really, because of those partnerships, the federal grant, the federal, uh, entity that awards it, that it's a much more attractive project because of those partnerships. If it was something that, that, you know, that one entity was doing on its own, then we wouldn't have been able to get that. So it's, it's a collective effort by all of those partners.
Right.
So, so I, I, this, I guess we either need to move on, I'm gonna take one more crack at this, and if not, then I think it's just time to put this to bed. So I'm gonna move that we approve, uh, and give the red and the purple with the commitment to Lamista that as we look at the extra-duty salary schedule, I will absolutely be open to and, uh, entertain the option of adopting this in the future and understanding that some of the levels I may not agree with, and we can have a vigorous debate at that point on whether or not, you know, something should be classified as a G, or an E, or an F, or a J, or a K, and, um, I will give it full consideration at that point. Even if one of the, my pet projects had to be reduced in a level, I will be completely open-minded towards that.
I will second it with also the promise to be open-minded.
And, and I want to reiterate that it's not that I'm trying to save money. I've, I've been very upfront that this was never about cost savings for me. It was about making it make sense across the district. So if the way we create this schedule is that everyone is still getting as much stipend as they are now or more, I'm completely okay with that. I'm not trying to nickel-and-dime the teachers. I'm trying to make sure that what we're putting in place makes sense.
And I, I agree with that.
That is my motivation. I am not trying to save money. I said that from the beginning.
Right.
Ideally, it'll be a, a system that makes sense and also has everyone making as much or more than they are now. That would be my ideal. I'm not trying to nickel-and-dime the teachers. That is certainly not my goal, and not the reason I've been resistant to, um, giving, go to the red section.
Okay.
So if we're moving forward, we, as long as we are committing to trying to have some sort of system that makes sense, I am completely on board with that.
Well, and, and I'll say this too with my motion. I would say that I, I am one hundred percent in support of doing, at passing an extra-duty salary schedule, and that it's November eighteenth, twenty twenty-one, everybody should be put on notice that the board is going to entertain this in the winter, and everybody that you all are texting right now to update them on, please put them on notice that we are going to look at this salary schedule. I think that's your intent, Mr. Housley, is to, to get this passed as early as possible, and I am one hundred percent in doing that, and I, I won't field emails or calls or anything like that, that you didn't get noticed, because I personally gave that to you tonight. So with that, I will call for the question.
Motion, is there a second?
There was a second.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Do we still have more agenda items?
Now we're gonna be eleven thirty.
Be able to go home, right?
You guys still through?
Item, they can't leave now. Item eight point two, discussion on fundraiser approval, Mr. Housley.
Oh. Good job, guys. Um, we have, uh,
We've managed to do it.
The discussion on fundraiser approval, um, something, as you, I think we've explained to you, um, in part at least, um, during the audit, which is like the song that never ends, um, the, the questions inside the audit have changed. And they do often, year to year. Um, one of the things that is coming to the surface, a lot in audits that we see already reported to the auditor general, has to do with fundraising. Um, in almost every case, you will see, um, issues surrounding student activities where most fundraising takes place. And they are requiring that there is some sort of process for that. So we've been, um, approaching that. Um, one thing is, is that the board should be privy to all fundraising activities that are had under the umbrella of Shola Unified School District. If they're saying we're, we're. If they're saying we're, we're with Cougar Athletics and we're selling these things, you should know about that. So when you get a, one of the community members that calls up and said, I had this handsome young man come by my house and sold me. 10, 10 packs of jerky that I've never seen. It was four months ago. Were you guys doing that? You might be able to say, no, we've never had that fundraiser and she, that said person would say, oh, I've been swindled, right? And, and that happens unfortunately around the nation, around the state and our own communities. So we have to. Put some things into place in accordance with the audit, auditor's request and that would be what you see here. So there's a form. That we will be, Vanessa's already sent out. There are some questions that, that come up, you know, what about fundraisers that we're already in the middle of? Do we have to now take them to the board? You know, what about ones, can we approve them annually? There are some things in there that, that questions that are going to come out and. And certainly if I'm the football coach and I know, I know I'm going to do this fundraiser next August. I could have it on the board agenda in, in the spring, right? So it's not. Not meant to be a last minute, throw it on the board agenda, I've got to wait a month to do it. I think there should be some thought into fundraising anyways. As far as booster clubs are concerned. Obviously, we don't have oversight per se of them, but there is on that document, there are goals that they set with the administrator. And what their fundraising activities are to accomplish those goals. And we're going to hopefully start to see those on there so you can have oversight of the fundraisers that are happening in our name, right?
Is that, what about PTSOs? Does that, do they fall under this or are they completely separate?
PTSOs and booster clubs should report that same thing back to us.
But they not, not in the form of this form?
It's not in this form, it's on the actual.
Here when we get later in the agenda where we see their financials.
Yes, ma'am. So to help with, help guide that, the administrative team has been. Working on a standard operating procedure, an SOP. You'll see that in there, it's in draft form right now. Our intention is to have these standard operating procedures for similar things like that that are hyperlinked. And when we get the manual put together, they can jump. So you'll see down at the bottom, for instance. In the SOP, reference cash handling, rec, cash reconciliation. So they, they'll, when this is active, they'll be able to hit those active links and it will take them to the actual documents. Cash handling is a big issue. For instance, if you do a fundraiser that starts, you start collecting cash in November, you have the fundraiser in December, you turn the cash in in January, that's not bueno. You have 10 days from the, the activity to, to have it deposited. And so part of what happens in student activities, I run this, I run this fundraiser. And the kids are going out and collecting this money, well, they're holding cash in their hands for days. And that, that isn't kosher with what we need. So we're, we're just going to try to tighten that up a little bit. We, not to impede the, the efforts and the kindness of generosity of our, our community, but to help protect. All those involved with fundraising because it becomes public money as soon as it handed over. So that's what this is about and we just ask for your, your approval of this, this form and kind of.
I, I think this is great. I'll move to approve the fundraiser approval form and implement that, so.
I'll second. On favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item eight point three, discussion and approval on bus driver incentives, Mr. Housley.
And a work session a few months ago, maybe it was, I remember, a, a few, a little bit ago, we talked about this. This plan that we were developing to help attract bus drivers. Specifically those who were without CBL. And the process from. You know, connecting with them on an application to full. Full driver, you know, as far as in a year from that, I'm going through that process. I think Mrs. Boyer mentioned how. She liked that intern feel of what it, what it was and kind of the apprentice kind of feel. So that's what's before you right now is that formal presentation or formal request to, to approve that and if, if we do get the approval, we'll. Move forward trying to recruit those people. I don't know. How many takers there'll be, but at least it's in place and, and we have a strategy to help get them in a year into full. You know, full commitment to us and, and get them ingrained in what we're doing.
Have we reached out to any other organizations? I know we had talked about that previously about maybe looking at as a job service or unemployment. Through the state.
Specifically not yet. I think I would rather have this in place. I had.
Prior to, right.
And then we can, then we can aggressively try to re-recruit this. We've been passive, not possibly, we've been aggressively recruited, just not with this plan.
Right.
And so we, we feel like this might give us some talking points to help bridge people.
I think it will.
I'll, I'll move to approve the bus driver incentive as proposed.
I'll second that. On favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item eight point four, approval of facility use fee schedule, Mr. Housley.
Madam President, members of the board, you have got to explore this a little bit with the Fine Arts Committee and the work session. And they're doing some phenomenal work. I really, really appreciate the time and effort. That they're doing so that we can bring this facility to where it needs to be and also. Get the, the remuneration that we, we should be getting from larger organizations. In a lot of scales, you'll see tier one, two, three, four, one, two, three, you'll see it tiered anyway. With the highest tier being those for-profit entities that are coming in with big show and big productions. They feel pretty confident that they've established that first tier. They're still working on tiers two, three and four, but they brought the body. Tonight to explain to you the process. What I would like you to consider for approval tonight is just the tier one that they feel like is finished. What, what that does is remind, I, I want to remind you in policy, it says that I have the ability to negotiate prices or to reduce fees or whatever. Below your established mark, they can't raise it, right? So what this will do is set the mark and then if we have entities that come in under that tier one in the interim. While the full plan is done, that I could work with them to set the schedule for what they're going to be for.
I'll just reiterate what you already said, Mr. Housley. To Carson and to his, the team, that we really appreciate that, Mrs. Whipple, Mr. Pratt, Jay Brim Hall and, and all of the other individuals who are serving on that committee. It's, uh, it's. It's great to see when our community members step up, our staff and, and kind of take on extra, you know, an extra role there to try to. Figure out what we need to do in, in this situation, especially people with that type of expertise. Like I, I know during the study session, I was. Asking some very elementary questions about the auditorium and what that is, just because of my knowledge is lacking there. So. I appreciate those people with the expertise to, to volunteer their time to do that and with that, I'll, I'll move to approve tier one. Has been outlined for the fee schedule for the auditorium.
I'll second that motion and I'd also like to thank Carson and team. I don't see anybody else out there, but. Everybody who contributed to this. I think it looks great and the timeliness of getting it to us is really appreciated.
Can you tell how much work must they must have been doing over the last few months?
Exactly, because we just asked for this, what, like three months ago and it's already to us and it looks beautiful. So thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Madam President, you do have a motion and a second after you call for the vote. Carson did stay. He, he endured this marathon. If he has something to say, maybe you could invite him to, to share his.
Okay, motion and a second. On favor? Opposed, motion passes. Carson, do you want to talk at all or?
You did a great job in the study session.
Yeah, it works at the study session.
I, I look forward to visiting the auditorium in December, so thank you for that invite and I'm excited to kind of see it firsthand so I get a better understanding. So thank you for that invite.
Very, very excited to be able to walk through with you so that you can see what we've been discussing, the issues that are at hand and why our plan. As comprehensive as it is, is being presented the way.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
December. Item eight point five, discussion and approval of substitute pay, Mr. Housley.
Obviously, in front of you this evening is, is a recommendation. We do have a couple of things that are, that are coming up and so the. Emergency subpay, which is the bottom. Tier of what we pay subs. Is based off of minimum wage. Minimum wage is going up to 1280 in January. So that on an eight-hour day puts it to just 102 and change. So the recommendation is 103 there. We also are looking for your. Your vote here to bring up certified substitutes to 125, retired substitutes to 150. And long-term substitutes after completing 20 consecutive days. On day 21, it would jump to 140. There, you asked where we were. As far as this, this recommendation moves us to higher up the tier ladder. In, in fact. One of our, our bordering districts that's right next to us and equal size to us, their long-term subpay is 150. So, I mean, that's the retired subpay too. So, yes, we are looking to improve that. I know it's been. Something that Mrs. Anderson has asked for continued attention to in each year. I look back about this time, we, we look at it, but this. I think certainly is one of the bigger jumps that we've had and, and I'd like to make that effective as of December 1st. Moved in that way.
Are you happy with it, Stacy?
I think it could be a little higher, better than it was, especially long-term subpay wise. That always less. When they're working a long time.
Long time.
Well, I know, but if they're retired and also long-term, do they still just get the same retired?
The retired? Is it any retired teacher or just Sholo retired substitutes?
Thanks for staying around.
Retired teachers earning $150 a day.
I'd like to make motion to approve the substitute pay as presented effective December 1.
On favor?
Aye.
I just want to point out, Madam President, that when we make decisions like this, we, when we set the, the budget right in July. You always have to set emergency contingency. And this is something that would classify as an emergency contingency, something we would want to make a decision like this for because we don't have. This is an act to try to recruit some and maybe we get one extra walk in the dark. I don't know what it's going to do. But it's an effort to do that and that's where, where we buy ourselves some time as far as building in. Into the budget, we, we have.
And thank you, Stacy, for your work on this. It's been, I know it's been something.
I didn't do anything except nag.
I know, but that's, sometimes that's the most important part, so.
It is a lot of effort. All right.
That is important.
No one's opposed, so motion passes. Item eight point six, discussion on the audit process, Mrs. Bieckhoff.
So I said earlier too, in the week to you guys, the current status of the 1920 audit. It's still ongoing. We're reviewing our capital assets, specifically our construction in progress numbers. We did a lot of construction with the bond money in tandem with the SFB money. And there's just some inconsistencies in the reporting that happened in the 1819 year. That seems a long time ago. So it's, I'm, I'm working on it. As, as CPAs and accountants. The auditors are certainly going to make sure that it reconciles appropriately or they're not going to reconcile. So. I'm working with a consultant to bring this eight, nine-month-long audit. To a close. As, as they mentioned here, our district is going to have a number of findings, which are basically just improvement areas that we're going to have to address.
The consultant, is it somebody that the district has hired or is it someone who like our auditors recommended?
It's, it's a consultant at Heinefeld Meach. It's a independent that's not part of our audit team.
Okay.
So.
Well, good, good. So, that's great.
It gets tricky with the construction in progress and the construction completed. You have to make that change in the report. So one, and, and sometimes when they cross. Correct me if I'm wrong, when they cross fiscal years, it, it can be pretty difficult. Something starts and there's a lot of time behind it, that's all in progress. And then it's still in progress and then you, you move and it finishes and now it's out of progress. So making sure that that's accurately tied and then now we have the joy of going back and figuring out where it wasn't connected so that we can.
Thank you. Any more questions? Item nine point one through nine point seven consent agenda, Mrs. Bieckhoff.
So for your review and approval, we have the ratification of the expense vouchers. Nine point two, ratification of the payroll vouchers. Nine point three, approval of the PTSO and Booster Club financials. Nine point four is new and it'll be there every month. It's going to be the approval of tax credit and activity accounts and show current balances. Nine point five, this is where you will find this month's current, the district fundraisers. Nine point six, the approval of the governing board minutes for the October 7th, October 28th and November 9th board meetings. And nine point seven, approval of donations. If Grant would like to read those.
Anybody else want to read them? I feel like I'm talking all the, all the camera time, so. You want, anybody else want to read them?
I talked enough today.
I will read them then. Sir, Sunrise Surgical donated $500 to the seventh grade junior high softball team. Tech Tools donated $250 to the robotics team. Donors Choose donated $500 worth of reading and math games to Miss Maryfield's class. All in Chocolate donated $100 work of chocolate bombs for the White Whipple Ranch Elementary staff. I want one of those, Debbie. I don't know how I procure one, but. Chocolate bomb sounds great. Hatch Toyota donated $3,200 to Whipple Ranch Elementary for the Turkey Trot t-shirts. Sholo Ford donated $2,000 to the Whipple Ranch Elementary staff for t-shirts and hoodies. And Fiesta Bowl Charities Wishes for Teachers donated $2,500 to Miss Shabakas. Yes. Classroom. And I'll just say that the Turkey Trot, my kindergartner, was looking forward to for three or four days. And he was all excited today when he came home. So thank you, Mrs. Hall and whoever you need to thank for putting that on. It was phenomenal. He absolutely loved it. And with that, I will move to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second. Go ahead. I'll second. Okay. On favor?
Aye. Move to adjourn.
Okay.
Okay.
On favor?
Aye.
Getting adjourned. Vanessa, can we do tax credit?